Join, uh, join me for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance. Could all please remain standing, have a moment of silence for all the men and women, past and present, who help protect us and our great country, as well as the heroes, uh, in the health industry, who stand between us and the pandemic. Thank you very much. Please make yourself comfortable. Okay, signing of the warrants, need a motion to allow Mr. McGinnis to, uh, sign that for us?
Oh, second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call, uh, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Taliban.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. Haron.
Yes.
And myself. Stamp away. All right, so our first order of business is a joint meeting with the school committee. Welcome to you all. Where would we like to start with this?
I can, uh, well, I just wanted, you know, in lieu of what's been going on, the school committee has been working very hard along with, uh, the superintendent and assistant superintendents, uh, to put together a plan. It's been the news, you know, it's been statewide. I just wanted the school committee to come in and the superintendent and Mr. Kylie, the assistant superintendent, to just talk about their plan formally with the board to give you an update. You know, there's many things we've read, uh, online and they have a great, uh, plan posted, uh, online for their reopening plan, but I thought it'd be best for the board to come in and if there's any questions of the select board for the school committee or the administration, that'd be a good opportunity to have that discussion. So really just an update on where they're at and, uh, how things are going.
Great, sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. McInnes. Uh, Dr. Gifford, uh, would you like to start off?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Oliver. Um, so again, I'm not, I'm sure you've all read most of the things that we're, uh, we've been doing, uh, to get started for school. So I'll try to give a quick synopsis. So as you probably know, we've started, um, a remote plan, if you will. Um, with that said, our students that are in our pre-K integrated program, our special ed students who are in our pre-K integrated program, as well as our, what we call our high needs special education program students, have been in the building, uh, today was day five, uh, for students in education. Prior to that, our teachers had returned for 10 days of professional development and safety and health and safety precautions, uh, training, et cetera. And prior to that, we did a lot of work with the buildings, which I know Mr. Kylie will talk about, getting the buildings themselves ready. We, our plan is to start students coming back into the building, more groups of students into the hybrid model, starting October 1. And we're bringing in various cohorts of students. As you probably know, we had to split the cohort, uh, the population pretty much in half to be able to fit students into classrooms, um, following the guidance. Six feet apart with our desks, uh, desks separated six feet apart. Um, obviously, all people will be wearing masks throughout the day. Uh, we've had to work hard with our nurses to establish isolation areas, et cetera. There, there's been a, a pretty good overhaul of the buildings with that, um, those, to follow the guidance. Um, so starting October 1, we'll be bringing groups in. Our youngest students first, pre-K through grade 2 and grade 6, because it's a transition year into middle school. And then each week, we'll be bringing in more groups of students. We do continue to have issues with our high school as far as class size and trying to fit the appropriate number of students into classrooms. We've worked really hard, uh, to reallocate spaces for, for teachers. Um, so we'll be continuing that. I know Mr. Kylie is working really hard right now with our bus transportation to try to meet those guidance, the guidances to, um, make sure we have the right number of students on the bus, seats assigned, masks, windows open, et cetera. Um, but what I can say right now, uh, visiting the buildings and watching the remote teaching that is happening, the teachers that are doing the remote teaching, it, it's, it's been pretty, pretty phenomenal. Um, you have to think about when we closed in the spring and that quick transition into remote learning, um, is nothing like now. We've had a lot of time for our instructional technology support teachers to work with our, the rest of our staff throughout this entire time. They've been incredible, our whole technology staff, to get folks ready for this. So teachers have a complete schedule, students have a complete schedule to follow all day long. But I want to emphasize that we're not expecting, because this is some of the questions that parents ask about, um, little guys or any of our kids to sit on a computer all day and stare at it for six hours. That's not what we're doing. Our teachers have been trained in personalized and blended learning prior to this. So they were well-prepared to be able to deliver instruction, um, like they would in a, a brick and mortar. Deliver a lesson, send students off to do independent work, a project, et cetera. Come back at such and such a time. We even heard the younger guys, uh, the young, the teachers of the younger guys saying, "Okay, it's recess time, come back in a half, you know, 20 minutes or so, or then it's lunchtime." So they're trying to run the remote learning, just like they would in, uh, brick and mortar. With that said, you probably know that we also have had to offer virtual learning for students or parents that said they are not coming back at all. So all of this has been very complex. There, there's not just one model of education. We've brack, we've pretty much, uh, created new models of education in no time at all to meet all the needs of all of our students, including special education, which has required minutes on IEPs, uh, related services, which is speech pathology, occupational, occupational therapy, et cetera. Um, so what we did was we went ahead and we had to, because of the COVID, we decided to hire one-year positions for a K5. So, okay, one, uh, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 teachers in a complete virtual academy. Those teachers are teaching students supposedly, if parents continue to, um, opt out of coming back at all, complete virtual education. We have them all housed at the Quinn Elementary School. We had a big enough, um, music room plus two other rooms. They're doing a phenomenal job from everything we've heard. They're following the same curriculum that the rest of our teachers are following. So we thought that was a good model for our elementary kids, which would need, uh, um, complete face-to-face, if you will, but through the computer, but a teacher on the other end to help them through this crazy time. At our high school, we've chose the, a platform, our model, or a company called Edgenuity. It's very independent work. We've used it before for credit recovery, so we felt comfortable with that model. Those students, uh, will be self-directed in their education, but they are receiving support from the lead teachers at the high school, as well as the, uh, guidance counselors, which will ensure that they take the right courses so that they're following the right pathway, uh, to get them to, you know, the end of the year, if you will, or graduation, whatever it might be. At our middle school, we've chosen a company called Teka. And, and I have to say, all of these companies were vetted and, uh, suggested and partnered with DESI, Department of Education. And, um, we waited for those models to be, um, accepted by DESI before we chose them. The reason we chose Teka was with the collaboration with the admin at the middle school, which felt that because the Teka company had certified teachers on the other end, if you will, in cyberspace, licensed teachers that would be delivering some synchronous live lessons to students for their core instruction, that we felt that was better for our middle school students and not to leave them like our high school students, a little bit, uh, less independent. Uh, but once again, those students will continue to receive support from our guidance counselors, not to say that they know exactly everything that's happening, because it is a virtual curriculum, it is a virtual company. Um, but we've emphasized over and over again that all of these students that have chosen this virtual platform are still Dartmouth Public Schools students, and we will continue to support them. Um, so that's kind of the curriculum end and teaching and learning end of what we've been doing. And, um, I know Mr. Kylie has a lot to say about the preparation of the buildings.
Yeah, could I ask you a question first?
Sure.
I, I know, I know you mentioned, uh, the, uh, parents concerned about coming back or not coming back. I, I am assuming that you've probably gotten comments both ways of, parents want their kids to go back and parents don't want their kids to go back. Uh, and it sounds like you've done a very thorough job analyzing all this. I'm just curious what the percentages kind of thing is, uh, how, how many kids, how many parents don't want their kids to go back and how many parents do want their kids to go back?
Sure. Um, so what I can tell you right now, unless the numbers have changed from a few days ago, we had approximately 50 students at the high school choose, uh, the Edgenuity platform. Um, 75, let me think a second, 75 at the middle school and 100 and about 48, 50 at the elementary school. So we have five, six grades at the elementary that are being taught virtually, so about 25, 30, 25 students in a class. So if we add that up, that's what, around 300-ish? I'm just doing it really, really quick in my head, so, um...
It's about 7%.
Thank you, Mr. Kylie. I was gonna say 10, but he's quicker on the numbers than me. So about that, but, you know, even since this is day five of education, uh, we've had a few folks flop in and out, because again, they might think that, uh, virtual is good, but then they see their little guy, for example, is very distracted, et cetera. So, um, we're trying to accommodate folks right now. But I, I actually was a little surprised at the number that did choose virtual based on the initial surveys that we put out.
But, okay, if I, if I followed that correctly, it sounds like most people want their kids back in the classroom.
Yes, and I, yes.
That's interesting.
Yes.
They're, they're sick of having them at home, I guess, maybe, you know, that's, maybe that's part of it.
It's hard, it's, and you know, I have to say, just walking around the schools and watching the teachers teach, I thought about this even as a teacher, you know, we know that they're doing what they're doing, but then to really see what they're doing, and I thought to myself, my goodness gracious, the little guys have a lot of parents sitting around with them, kind of watching? And I said, "Boy, oh boy, as a teacher back in the day, I don't think I would have liked that too much." 20 parents staring at you. Quite a new experience. And, and a lot of the folks that, uh, took the jobs as the virtual one-year teachers, you know, they're brand-new, brand-new teachers, so they're doing a great job.
That's good.
What a challenge.
Yes.
Mr. Kylie, you can continue if you like.
Sure, sure. Um, thank you for, uh, for having us here tonight. Yeah, it's, it's hard to believe that, you know, six months ago, um, we thought we were going to be closed for a short period of time and then, and then, uh, do a deep cleaning do of the schools and hopefully get right back at it. And, um, obviously that, you know, hasn't happened, so... But we're only eight days away from beginning the hybrid fit, hot phase, where, you know, we're gonna have, when we get to full hybrid, uh, you know, half our kids in school every day. So that's really exciting for us. It's, it's taken a lot to get to that point. We have, um, you know, our buildings, um, you know, are, certainly weren't designed for, for this. Um, so immediately we figured out, even before the, the DESI guidance came out, that, you know, we're gonna have to provide some distancing for kids in order to be able to make this work. And we took a look at the buildings and how we might be able to do this and how many kids could we fit? And thankfully, we can fit half with, uh, mostly six-foot physical distancing. And that involved a whole lot of work on, uh, so many people's parts, uh, you know, to, to make this a reality and to really think critically about, how are we gonna make stairways one-way so kids aren't, you know, passing each other and looking at the corridors and, uh, the whole flow of the building and making sure that we can keep people safe? And then supplying the building with what they need, uh, you know, in order to, uh, provide for good hygiene and distancing? And it's just, um, it's, it's been a, an interesting task and we're still learning, you know? We're, we're learning every day, um, things we need to think about. So we have, you know, about 100 kids in the buildings in five of our schools right now, high-needs, um, population of kids. So we're learning from that and, uh, getting ready for eight days from now. So it's been very exciting, but it's, it's not without, um, lots of effort on so many people's parts. Our, our maintenance crew, led by Rick Ferreira, uh, helping us, you know, get ready for this. Uh, the custodians in the buildings, the administrators, planning and then replanning and then guidance coming out. And then the guidance isn't what we thought it was gonna be and then starting things over. And it's just been, it's been quite a process. But I think, you know, what Dr. Gifford has talked about, uh, a lot throughout this process is that we need to be flexible. So we know going forward, we just need to continue to be flexible and adjust to whatever, uh, you know, whatever the circumstances present to us. Um, and that's, I'm a finance guy by trade, although I do a lot of different things here. Uh, flexibility isn't always the easiest thing for, uh, from a financial perspective, you know? You have limited, limited means. And we're fortunate that, um, both, you know, Sean and Greg Barnes are great to work with and, you know, certainly help us, uh, you know, through this process. And we have some federal grants that we've received that have been, uh, more than a million dollars directly to the schools that have supported us through this. And without that, I, I don't know where we would be. Uh, we, I don't think we'd be in school without that. Um, so it's, it's, but, but it's something that we recognize that as we move forward here, we're gonna need to maintain that flexibility and, um, you know, approach problems as they, as they arise, one problem at a time.
Look, clearly there's an awful lot of details that your folks have had to go through and will continue to go through. Uh, but it sounds like you've put an awful lot of thought in this and, and I congratulate you on your, on your plans. Um, I also know that no matter what you do, somebody's gonna find fault with it. That's, because that's, because that's the nature of the beast. So the better you could just put your head down and move forward with your best, best thoughts and, uh, adjust as necessary. So I think that's pretty, so, I sort of hear in there somewhere, was that, Mr. Taliban, please?
Thank you. To say that I'm an absolute R of what the school committee, administration, and the teachers have done. I hear comments all over town about it constantly and taking something that's virtually impossible to make it work and then know that whatever you try, it's probably gonna have to be adjusted anyway. My congratulations. Uh, one comment that I have some experience with in regard to masks. Uh, you anticipate resistance to masks, uh, either by teachers, students, or parents in the school, in the buildings, once they start coming in?
I, I don't anticipate it. I, I mean, I, I think that there are, um, we've already received some medically-related exemption, uh, you know, situations and, and those are what they are. And we'll adjust our practice accordingly and make sure there's good physical distancing, uh, to be able to keep everybody safe, um, that those, those folks and the other folks that they'll be, uh, you know, in school with. So, I mean, it's a concern, of course, um, but, you know, I, I think that, um, we are going to try and make sure that, that everyone understands that we're in this together and we all need to do our part. And, um, you know, like anything else, it's gonna take, especially when you're dealing with young kids, it's gonna take, uh, constant reinforcement. But I, I, you know, I'm confident that we can, we can make that work.
For what it's worth, for what it's worth, I've had a fair amount of experience over the last months, uh, months of people who think that they are better than all of us in exercising their, um, their independence by not wearing them and giving you every justification possible. And I think that having a plan ahead of time and being consistent with that argument is what, uh, makes these people disappear. Uh, the medical thing is valid and it's, uh, they have to have it with them and they should have it with them and being a consistent message is have, because it, it, it can, it can really rip people apart. It's embarrassing, it's loud, and I think that, and I'm not saying this is gonna happen, but I think the preparation, it can be much bigger than it has to be. Uh, but a good plan ready for it is, I, I recommend that. And I'm sure you probably thought about it already, but that's my comment.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, the school committee enacted a, uh, strong policy, uh, on this at, at our last meeting. And, um, you know, I think that, that, that helps us as administrators be able to, you know, have that, uh, as a backdrop for, for our decisions with folks as we, uh, as we move forward.
Thank you.
Curiosity, in the, in your hybrid plan, what is the, what is the switch-off number of days between, uh, brick and mortar and virtual? Are you doing it a week at a time or?
Every other day.
Yeah, yeah, the, yeah, the, the plan will be, uh, starting October 1, we're bringing, like I said, our pre-K 2 and our grade 6. But as Mr. Kylie said, it's gonna be, the cohorts are A, B, so it's every other day. And each week, we'll bring in another group of students to, by October 19th week, where our, we should be full, uh, all students returned. But why we chose that model, I mean, we analyzed a lot of models. Obviously, people always think, oh, a week on, a week off, a day or two days, whatever. Everybody has a different idea, but we chose the model we did. We thought, felt it was more pedagogically sound, where students were kind of like, we, I always say like a college class, where you're in school, you get your lesson, you spend the day, you go home, you complete all your projects, you come back the next day. We didn't like the every-other-week model. We felt it was too, um, kids would be disengaged from education, almost like a vacation every other week. Um, so it's every other day, each cohort will come.
Did parents have any complaints with that? Because it would seem to me that, that would be harder to set up, uh, care, you know, home care for kids and stuff.
Yeah, they did. Um, we actually, our initial survey that went out way back, uh, that was one of the top, the other, every other week and that one with the two top choices. And that when we chose that one, it was a big, yeah, people complained. I understand the daycare, I understand it all. You know, we tried to do the best we could and, and chose what we felt was better for kids, but, yeah, we, we, we heard complaints. Yeah.
Mr. Mickelson, please.
Well, you're damned if you do and damned if you don't, that's for sure. And, um, so I'm, I'm not concerned, but I, I think maybe, I think the people that are watching, uh, need to know what the school system has, has done for clean air, both air conditioning and heating condition, heating systems. Um, maybe it would be nice if, uh, Rick might have been here. Um, that's my business, so I, I know quite a bit about it. But I'm, I understand how you, how you can clean the air, but I think the residents won't be in that.
Well, I could, uh, share a little bit on it. So what, um, what we've done, obviously, we've cleaned all of the HVAC units in the buildings. That's normal practice for us during the summer. So, uh, we've cleaned all those, changed filters. We have, um, decided that it would benefit everyone in the schools by expanding the hours of operation of those units so that we can, um, you know, bring more air exchange into the buildings, which is a key. Uh, so we've done that. Now, I will say, I have some concerns about that because our units are old and, you know, we have a lot of 1960s equipment still. So, um, that's, you know, whether, how, how long that continues to operate without, you know, needing constant maintenance is, is certainly a concern. But that's what we're doing right now, is providing additional airflow into the classrooms. We've also manipulated the systems so that they, um, rather than mix recycled air, um, they bring in outside air. So the buildings are cool. So that, that, uh, some of these 40, 49-degree mornings, um, it can be a little, uh, it can be a little challenging in the buildings right now. So that's gonna be something that we're gonna face as we move forward. We're also in the process, um, we, today and tomorrow, will be distributing, uh, HEPA filter, air, air purifier, uh, to certain areas of the buildings. And, um, we're working with our, with our collective bargaining groups to, um, expand that. Um, we've come to an agreement to expand that, uh, HEPA air filtration. So we'll be in the process of, uh, procuring all those and, uh, adding those to spaces as well. But we're encouraging airflow also by opening windows, which, again, at this point in time in September is a, is a good option. Uh, eventually that, that will start to not be as good of an option for us. So hence the, the need for air filtration. Um, we have very limited ability to, to increase the, uh, filters in our buildings to a higher MERV rating, because, um, they just don't, our equipment really just doesn't accommodate for it. It wouldn't, um, push the air through it. And, uh, so we mostly have MERV 8 filters throughout the buildings. Um, although MERV 13 is, my understanding is that, uh, that's sort of a, a recommendation. We're really unable to, unable to make that happen, given the, the age of the equipment and type of equipment we use.
So I wonder, uh, if there's grant money for the, uh, for this machinery, this new machinery? Because what, what you have, what we have on our roof, rooftops, and what's available today is, uh, besides being more efficient, which is, you know, they literally pay for themselves, um, there, there are some grant, I'm sure there's gotta be some grant money, maybe sponsored by the federal government, only because of the, I know in our business, um, there are rebates and the rebates are substantial, almost to the point where the, where the, um, the power company, which basically is being re, 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 uh, remunerated by the government, uh, you basically, uh, you, it pays for the entire piece of equipment. So, and having our own staff that could utilize, do install, uh, that could be something to look at. But I would strongly suggest to look at these, this rebateable machinery. Um, and the numbers, again, are huge.
I agree. And actually, uh, I can, glad to report that we are looking into that. We've, um, Kathy Stanley, who's, you know, working with you folks on energy, uh, and Rick Ferreira have been working together to look at, uh, rebates. And there's some substantial ones from Eversource, um, available that we've, the, the three of us have, uh, taken a good look at and where, that's what we're targeting, some of our air filtration efforts with.
Good news.
Just, just out of curiosity, I'm wondering if some of your older buildings, uh, if you explore the, uh, UV dash C technology?
I, I've looked at the UV, so the UV technology, um, has some merit, from what I understand, but it's also somewhat unproven in certain situations as to whether or not, you know, how effective it would be. Um, at this point where we're focusing on the HEPA filtration.
Yeah. I know, I know the, uh, UVC is, is, is very effective as long as you have the residence time necessary for, uh, uh, air, air to pass through that, out of the process, uh, it's, it's, and be significantly exposed to it. Uh, everything I've read, so that's really a, a great way to go.
Yeah, if you, if you remember, so most of our buildings have, um, univents. So, uh, most of the heating units are individual to, to classrooms. The, the ventilation units, I should say, are, um, you know, individual to classrooms. So I, I agree, it's, it's something, you know, that could be considered, but, um, but yeah, at this point...
It's antiquated, yeah, we have antiquated machinery in that.
We do.
That UV will not work, Frank. I can tell you in our business, um, on, on the commercial side, uh, that's, there's no offering. That's on the residential side more so, but, um...
Well, everything I've read about it has been on the commercial side, so...
No, we don't sell it.
Do you have, do you have, do you have a plan for checking, actually checking air quality? Uh, so you verify that, uh, what you're doing is working?
We do not have air quality testing, um, in place, but we do have, um, obviously, our, the important part of it is airflow exchange in our classrooms. And, um, Rick Ferreira himself, uh, we've bought some testing equipment in order to be able to, uh, monitor it. And as we see issues, we'll be doing so. The good news is that some of this old equipment still works pretty well and still produces a pretty good, a pretty good amount of airflow, surprisingly. That, that part of it is, uh, i- is pretty operational. I mean, it doesn't have filtration, that's the, that's, it has low-level filtration, MERV 8 maximum filtration, that's the downside. But in terms of airflow, it's, it's pretty decent.
Yeah, you, you know, it's, it's difficult when you're getting into a situation where you're asking the equipment to do something it wasn't originally designed for, so...
Right.
Modify as necessary, you know?
As it gets colder, that's gonna be a concern.
Right, yeah, heating costs are gonna go through the roof, that's, especially with windows open.
Yeah.
Mr. Oliver, please.
Thank you, Mr. Gracie. Uh, just, I have a couple of comments. Uh, first of all, if you remember, a couple of years ago, the school committee actually had the opportunity, we put together, we hired a firm to conduct a long-range facilities master plan. And one of the things that came out of that was that our HVAC, our HVAC systems were extremely antiquated. And I don't wanna get too far off on a tangent, but this is a... And I don't want to get too far off on a tangent, but this is a perfect example of really that we need to really start looking at our facilities. Because some of these upgrades are going to require a lot of capital and a lot of time and effort in order to replace them. Um, Mr. Kylie is extremely miffed uh with saying he's uh, he's researched some things. It's been a monumental task, make no mistake about it, between Dr. Gifford, Mr. Kylie. Um, and and all of the administrative team uh working since March to figure out with a number of moving pieces. And I think I I'm very pleased, I I believe my committee members are also extremely pleased with the plan that they put together. Yeah, we knew not everyone was going to be happy with it when we voted uh to start the year remote, but I still believe that was the right decision. And it's given us an opportunity to conduct a slow roll. Um, and hopefully, uh, God willing, we'll get our students back into the buildings. And uh, everyone will stay healthy. But yeah, it's really important to note that we really do a- after this uh, this pandemic comes to a conclusion. Which I really hope is sooner rather than later, uh, that we can, you know, go back and start to revisit some of these systems. That really ultimately need to be replaced. So uh, kudos to um, to my administrative team uh at the school department. Thanks, Gracie.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Talabon.
Uh, my last question would be, um, what can we as a select board do in some form, either in the short term or. A long term, maybe what Mr. Oliver just mentioned, uh, for the school committee to help out in some form. Is there anything?
Uh, I think just show offering, and this, I can only speak for myself right now, but just continuing to offer your support, Mr. Talabon. As we move forward and we look um to uh, to consider making upgrades and let's. Let's first get through our reopening of schools and let's get students back in the buildings and let's get them educated in person, but no, um. I think I speak on behalf of the school committee that we do appreciate any and all um assistance that you guys, you folks are willing to provide.
Anyone else? Mr. Nunes, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, uh, you know, just to kind of follow along with uh, Mr. Oliver said. Uh, I think, you know, the one thing that we do need is, and we're no different than anyone else, including the town and we're part of the town, is. Is funding and we appreciate everything that, you know, the town is giving us and I think it. Who's everybody to uh keep the pressure on our legislators in Boston and also our federal delegation to uh. Have them, you know, try to keep the funds coming this way to uh, to help us, because this is not uh. You know, none of these situations that we're working through our chief, you know, whether it's, you know, getting storage containers or. Getting the masks or the PPEs or, you know, the additional personnel that we've had to get. It's it's all costs money and, you know, costs money for the town for some of the things you've had to do on the town, so. I think that's the uh, what it who's, you know, everyone to also keep an uh, an eye on and, you know, in the forefront.
Yep, makes sense. Yep. Anyone else? If not, we thank you very much. It's been very enlightening and uh, we certainly wish you all the luck in the world and keep doing what you're doing. And I know you're all smart enough to to adapt as necessary and always do the right thing regardless of uh criticism you may receive along the way.
No, I thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. We appreciate it. Uh, and we are going to go into exact, right, uh, Dr. Gifford. We're going to adjourn into executive session.
Yes, I I think we have to open our meeting here, because that's how we had put it on the agenda. Mr. Oliver, if you don't mind, and then we'll move into executives. That's what I think we have to do.
Sure, if you don't mind me uh taking the floor, uh, Mr. Gracie, so we can open our meeting and adjourn directly into executive session.
Certainly help yourself. We'll share, we'll share screen space with you anytime.
Fair enough. Uh, at this time, I I like to call the uh, meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order. For Monday, September twenty-first, two thousand twenty. Could I have a roll call, please, Ms. Gunther?
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Kathleen Amaral.
Here.
Mary Waite.
She's frozen, Kate.
Mary is frozen and muted.
Yeah.
Do we want to wait a second to see if Mary comes back?
Muted too, but she's happy about it.
Back. I just got back. I was frozen.
You're here now, yeah?
Yes.
I know. Thank you very much, Mary.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Kate. Um, at this time, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session. For the purposes uh, for an update uh to collective bargaining uh with union personnel, not to reconvene. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any further discussion?
No.
Chair hearing done. Roll call, Ms. Gunther.
Chris Oliver.
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins.
Yes.
Kathleen Amaral.
Yes.
Mary Waite.
Yes.
John Nunes.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care. Okay. Our next issue is a joint meeting with the planning board regarding the issues they have. How would you, how would you folks like to handle this, uh?
Can I need to um call a um, a meeting to order for the planning board? And I need to call a roll call, uh, Margaret? You're muted. Margaret? Stephen Taylor?
I'm here.
Kevin Mello?
Present.
Okay, so the board, the planning board is all here for the meeting. Um, I'm gonna leave it basically up to the Board of Selectmen. But the planning board did meet and we thought that what we would do is we have four questions to ask every applicant. Um, and then at the end of the four questions, we would deliberate and appoint someone. Because we have some activity coming up in town and we really do need to have five members to the board as soon as possible. We have several things coming before us at our next meeting, October fifth. Um, I thought if you didn't mind, I would just start out by welcoming the um, the three applicants. And just giving them a very brief thing about how we meet, et cetera, et cetera. But this is up to the Board of Selectmen. It's up to you and how you want to handle it.
Well, please, proceed with uh what you had in mind. I think that's where, that's fine.
Okay, do we have our three applicants um on?
Three are in the waiting room. Do you want me to let them all in at once? Or one at a time?
I wish it just one at a time.
One at a time, and I thought we'd go alphabetical, so it would be Bear, Canberra and O'Neill.
Okay, we'll bring him back.
Um, Mr. McInnes, I know you put our questions together based on our input. Are these different questions or what the planning board has?
Uh, I, the planning board had submitted questions, as did some of the select board members, so what I did was uh. I worked with the planning director, we combined the questions. Some of them were approximately the same and asking the same question, so. Uh, the four questions and there's some sub-questions covered everything that was submitted.
Okay.
Is Ms. Bear available?
Yes, I'm here.
Welcome, and I wanted, I wanted, first of all, thank you for applying. And say that if for some reason you're not appointed, I hope strongly that you look at some of the other committees that are looking for members. And um, continue volunteering. Um, first of all, let me, let me let you know that um, we meet every other Monday night. We start at seven o'clock. And our meetings can go from seven to nine to ten. They usually don't go to ten, but it's a good two to three, four hours sometimes.
Okay.
We may meet more than that, like tonight, we're meeting, you know, it's an odd week, we wouldn't meet, so this happens to say we're meeting three weeks in a row. Um, this appointment will only be until April, at which time um, the election will um be. And that will be when the um, you would have to rerun, you would have to run if you choose to stay on the planning board.
Right.
Okay, so now we have four questions that we're going to ask all applicants. And the first question is um briefly, could you tell us about yourself and why you're applying for the planning board position? And do you think you would seek election in April?
Well, um, I'm a recently requi- retired um physician and psychiatrist. I have lived here since buying a home in two thousand eight. And um, I've worked in my thirty-year career in. Many different settings. I did have a private practice for almost that entire time. As well as working in teaching hospitals, community hospitals, community mental health centers. Um, nursing homes and I really worked with a wide range of. Clientele. I um, in a variety of settings. I did retire and so the, uh, this past year, I've been able to spend more time here, which has been wonderful. And I really felt like I have time and I have energy and I have motivation to. Uh, do something I care about and what I do see um. Is, this is a beautiful town and I really want to do what I can to keep it that way. And I know I uh, I have a lot to learn, so a lot will be learning. Um, I'm aware of that. And you were asking why? Is there, why I wanted to do this?
Yes.
I think mainly I just a real uh love of the town and um. Hoping and wanting to see that decisions are made that will preserve the really unique. Gifts and treasures that we have here that make it different than other towns. I've lived uh mostly in Rhode Island and outside Boston. I grew up outside Philadelphia. I lived in New York City and Los Angeles, so I've seen a variety of places and how they've managed. Development or mismanaged development and uh, we we really have a chance here to get it right. We, we have so much going for us and um. It's really exciting, actually, and I think we're at a crucial time, so rather than just think about it and. Talk about it, I figured I should at least try to do something, so.
Okay, so the second question is, how would you?
All right, I just got to suggest this question, some states are the same. Perhaps we could alternate select board, planning board, select wood, playing wood to ask the questions, so that.
Okay, fine.
I don't want my group to doze off.
Uh, I agree. So, okay, someone needs to ask this. Do they have the questions?
Yes.
The only thing I was gonna say is um, the applicant did not um say whether or not she would seek reelection.
Oh, okay, you're right. Yes, I would. That would be my intention. Um, I really think I have a different perspective to contribute.
Thank you very much. Who wants to ask, ask question two?
I'll ask.
Okay.
Hello.
Yep, um. So, how are you? Good evening. Uh, how would you use your qualifications, experience to bring an impact to the board immediately? Do you feel comfortable with the long-term learning curve?
I definitely have to be comfortable with the long-term learning curve, because I'm aware I'm. It will be that. Um, I think what I have to bring is um. Capacity, really an interest and capacity for analytical thinking. I'm comfortable with data analysis and really as it applies to people. And well-being and um, I have a science background. But my career, I've been a professional listener and problem solver. So I do think those qualities are necessary. Um, I really think that coming from a background of science and. Health um, might be slightly different than some of the other people. I don't know. And but perhaps kind of the model in my, I ha- carry models in my mind of. Development of um, health over time and decisions that are made. Now that may seem small, but are cumulative and either lead to decline. And illness or decisions that can be made that really enhance health and happiness. And I really think that kind of uh model applies to our town. And to the people who live here.
Thank you very much. Let's have a selectman do the third question and then the planning board can do the fourth question. How's that? So which other selectman would like to ask the fourth, the third question? Do we have a volunteer?
Mr. McDonald.
Hi.
How are you? Um, what is your knowledge base of the tone, of the town zoning bylaws and planning regulations um, as its knowledge derived from? Is the knowledge derived from personal or professional experience related to planning, development, construction or real estate?
Um, my, that's a good question, because I, I have no background in that arena. Um, I have been on other types of planning committees. But I know very little about um, the actual details of the laws. Or planning regulations for Dartmouth. Um, I am interested. I have been, I did sit through the town meeting on Zoom. On Zoom and found that really interesting. Um, and I do look at the town website. I see, I try to, I'm trying to learn what I can. Um, so far, what I've learned is I have a lot to learn. I, and I know that uh. A lot of time is going to be spent listening and asking questions. And seeing what other, you know, people, the residents of the town want and think, what the history has been. Which I, I have tried to look into that um, as well as bringing. My own kind of uh orientation.
Well, I can, I can tell you this. Anybody that's you're looking at right now across the board has zero experience going into whatever position that they're in. And that, but every single one of us brought a passion and desire to do what's best for the town, and really that's the key. Um, not just uh, you know, nobody goes into this saying, I know everything, because trust me, you don't know anything.
Well, the more, the more I find out, the more, the more I realize, wow, I have a lot to. But I find it exciting and I really care and that's enough to motivate me to. Pour through some documents and try to put numbers together and. So thank you for letting me know that. I did feel a little bit like a fish out of water, but. I appreciate that.
There are, there have been many fish out of water sitting on committees. So, until they learn how to swim, um, that's exactly what happens. So I, I'm just kind of a follow-up question, which I'm probably, pretty much know the answer is, is there any conflicts in your um. That would preclude you from, say, um, from discussing any of the proposals that may come before the board itself?
I can't imagine any. I have no other, um, aside from my home here. Um, I have no other financial, it's, I really just ultimately care about. The health of the town.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the fourth question is, where do you see Dartmouth in five to ten years? And what would you change to achieve a balance of residential, commercial and industrial land uses for the long-term. Su- sustainability of the town? And what do you feel are the most significant changes facing the planning board right now?
Wow, that's a great question. That is really what um. I think, I really think we're at a a crucial point uh in the history of the town. And maybe everybody thinks that. uh in the history of the town. And maybe everybody thinks that every year, I don't know. Um it seems that we're we are at a point where we need to make some decisions that aren't easy. And I in terms of preserving land, I would argue that our most significant resources are are the things that if you look at the website or you look at what we put you know, what Dartmouth's proud of. We see pictures of the waterfront, the the farms. We talk about the farms, the the open land, the green space. And I think and the historical uh preservation. I really think we need to make sure we we serve those things and and value them. The hard part is also making sure that that jives with the financial health, the numbers and um I think that can be done. I don't think they have to be oppositional because ultimately what I would see is if there's a decline in those real gems that we have, we'll lose out in the long run. Every resident probably cares about maintaining property values and those can only be maintained if Dartmouth is a place where people want to live. And uh I think we're at a point now where it is, it is a place. People talk about it and when they say it, they talk about it's beautiful, the farms, the open space, the water. I think um what they did in the village was good, at least from my point of view. I don't have the numbers, but it looks like there's a lot more uh commercial business going on, more money coming into the town. Um I can tell a lot more boats stopped there. Um they actually put it on their trip to stop in Peyton Airmar Harbor because there are things to do and um it's a cute town they want to see. And then they spend days here and spend money. The other people I know come down from Boston to hike on the trails and they will spend money. Um people come and buy homes here for the same reason. People come and buy summer homes and you'll have um taxing come from that. I think the the concern is that there's that increased development doesn't always lead to increased financial gain because there's a a balance point where the expenses will start to outweigh the gain from taxes. And uh from what I understood um it seems like for new development of certain types of homes, we actually lose m- money because amount that's gained in taxes more is spent on infrastructure and uh community service expenses. Whereas some other sorts of development like rehabbing or restoring existing homes or uh really we doing something with the Route Six commercial area where I think there are some opportunities there where we could I get I don't know what's happening with the mall, but I've heard that that might be spaced there. There may be a lot of room to make some creative changes and enhance uh you know, really take advantage of that um commercial area. And I guess my general orientation and care I care about the future, both the the older people, we need senior housing. I I think to give people an alternative so they can stay in the town or um and for kids for the education, maintaining the education, maintaining um services for younger kids. I don't know if that we're cover that in planning at all, but I think having open space or having uh recreation goes a long way in terms of health of children and teenagers. And if we're, you know, we're concerned about police, we can do a lot of prevention, I think, to avoid having to increase other costs. So I think it's a balancing. And again, I'm coming in from the outside, so I have a lot to learn about how what the actual numbers are. But I do think we're we have a great uh opportunity to be careful with decisions and think about how what the long term impacts will be. I can go on and on about specifics, but I I don't want to and make will probably be too much.
Okay, um like I said, thank you very, very much for applying and um we will tonight um deliberate to um get someone on the board because we need someone to attend our first meeting. The new person would be October 5th at seven o'clock and it's a Zoom meeting and um our town planner gets all the information out to um uh the board members uh ahead of time. And thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, alphabetically, the next one is Mr. Canberra. Is Mr. Canberra on?
He's muted.
Can he un- unmute Mr. Canberra? DCTV, can you get him unmuted?
Is that better?
Yes, I Mr. Canberra, is that you?
Yes, this is me.
Thank you very much. The first thing I would like to say is thank you very much for applying. And if for some reason we do not appoint you this evening, um I would really strongly like to like you to look at the other boards that need uh members and get, you know, active in some of the other areas, um if not for us. Um I just want to give you a little background. We meet every other Monday night. Um we start at seven o'clock and we can go from seven to nine to 10, depending on how how much is on our on our um agenda. The um every once in a while, we have to put in a third meeting and as we get busy, we're working, you know, on things. And these this appointment is only until April, at which time um if you choose to um stay on the board, you would need to run for an election for the board. And we have four questions to ask you this evening and we're going to alternate between the planning uh myself, the planning um chair and the board of selectmen. So the first question is please briefly tell us about yourself and why you were applying for the planning board position. And do you plan to seek election in April?
First of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity to uh to apply for the board. Um and yes, I would be seeking reelection if I am elected to your board. To tell you a little bit about myself, um I'm gonna be fifty six years old. I come from a family that's been in Dartmouth here in the Peyton Airm area for a hundred years. And um I have an extensive construction background. The reason why I want to be on this committee is um I have a twelve year old daughter and I want to see her enjoy the town the way I have with growing up through the uh the most important time of your life as a little preteen. I care about my town. I've I've come full circle. I was born here. My mother remarried. I moved out of town for for some time and and I've come back to where I where I was born. So um that's my main reason for joining the planning board. I'm also a member of the Police Reuse Committee. So that was my first step was that was the first committee that I ever was on in the town. So this is all new to me. And I'm I'm very eager to learn anything that can be learned. I believe that I'm gonna bring a lot to the table that can be of use to the town. And I think I answered that question for you. I hope I didn't uh. I'm a little nervous. I've never done this before, as I'm sure you folks can tell.
No problem. Um would you seek election in April?
Oh, yes, I most definitely would, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. Stanley?
Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening, sir. Thank you for your application.
Uh you're more than welcome.
So um how would you use your qualifications and experience to bring an impact to the board immediately? And do you feel comfortable with the long term, long learning curve?
Well, immediately, I mean whatever I could do immediately would be um I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Immediately, I don't think anything immediately because I'm gonna have a lot to learn. I mean, I do have a lot. I have experience with um with building residentially in the town. I'm a union laborer, so I work with the commercial aspect of it at at my job. Um all I can do is come in with open eyes and open ears and try to absorb all that I can learn. Um I don't know if that's answering the question correctly. Um I mean, as far as reading blueprints and so forth, that's all part of my background, so going over different zoning and so forth, I've I've dealt with that with the town prior to when I've done construction in town. So maybe that'll help me as far as having some experience with building codes and so forth. Um I hope that answers your question, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what is your knowledge? Um Sean, you're next. I'm sorry.
David, how you doing?
Very good, sir.
Um let me ask you a question. What is your knowledge based on town bylaws or uh planning regulations and uh if you have any, is it derived from any personal or professional experience re- related to the development, construction or real estate?
Well, the only um experience that I've had is when I we built a house in town. So like any other resident would, if you want to build a house, you know, you have to go through all the channels to get your permits and so forth and deal with conservation and and with the planning department. But um any more than that, no, I don't have much more than that, sir.
I just a follow up. Um is there any conflicts? Do you have any conflicts that may preclude you from sitting on the planning board or at least deliberating on any item that may come before the planning board?
I don't believe so, sir. I don't have any uh other interest besides my own home in the town.
That's what it should be. Man is his castle.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the last question is where do you see Dartmouth in five to 10 years? And what would you change to achieve a residence, a balance of residential, commercial and industrial land use for the long turns to sustainability of the town? And then what do you feel are the most significant challenges facing the board right now?
Well, what I'd like to see in the next few years is my daughter is twelve, gonna be thirteen. And when she goes to Dartmouth High School, I'd like to be able to see her walk down a sidewalk to get to the high school from where I live. And presently, that's not something that I don't know if it's in the workings or not, but that's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see Dartmouth stay as that quaint little seaside community that um that it's always been. I know that there's some um there's some workings in the in the plain as far as for harbor walk, some more water access for the residents of the town. As far as as far as any new businesses coming into town, I'd like to see um I'd like to see businesses that are like welcomed into the community, not like, oh, I don't want that in my backyard kind of a kind of a thing. Um kind of like with the police station where where we we went through the police station like, well, what are we gonna do? So that gave me a little insight is like what the planning board does as far as trying to reuse a piece of property and um you know, I'd like to see more more local residents get jobs in town, you know, if that's something that is part of the planning department, that's something that I'd strongly recommend. And I just hope for a nice even growth for the town. You know, I belong to DNRT, so it's always wonderful that we can preserve some open space for the younger generation because as we all know, if we just keep building and building and building, then there won't be any place for the younger people to go. See nature and um you know, I'm really looking forward to if if I get this appointment to learn from the people on the board. Because you know, none of us were born to be board members. We all have to learn somewhere. And all I can do is come to the board with an with an open mind and um and try to learn from the people that were that sit in your seats before me.
Thank you very much.
You're more than welcome.
And and we will deliberate tonight and make an appointment tonight and our first meeting would be October 5th. And our town planner will be getting all that information out to um the appointee, okay?
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for thank you for being here.
Well, it's my pleasure.
Okay, the next appointee is uh Mr. O'Neil. Okay, what was that? Oh, into the Twilight Zone. Mr. O'Neil on, please?
Believe he's muted too.
Oh, could someone unmute him?
I think I should be all set now.
Are you? Okay, you're on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
Okay, I don't.
I don't hit the video.
Yeah, hit hit um. We we got you?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, I don't. No, no.
He's there.
He's there.
He's there. Okay, fine. Um Mr. O'Neil, I I want to thank you for applying. And um if for some reason tonight you don't get appointed, I would really like to um suggest that you look into some of the other board uh boards um that are looking for members and um continue to volunteer for Dartmouth. Um just a little bit about the planning board. We meet every other Monday night. Um we start at seven o'clock and we can go anywhere from two hours to four hours, depending on how much we have on our agenda. And once in a while, we do have to do a third or fourth meeting um because we we end up having a lot of um you know, um stuff on our agenda. The other thing is this appointment is only until April when um it's the election time. And we have four questions that we're gonna ask and we're gonna alternate it. I'll ask the two for the planning board and then two members of the select board will ask two questions. So to begin with, uh pre- brief, uh please briefly tell us about yourself and why you are applying for the planning board position. Do you think you would seek election in April?
Uh first of all, Mr. Miller, can you is my video not on?
It is. You're on.
No, it is on. Okay.
All right. So thank you all. Um and good evening. Thanks for the invitation. Uh my name's Chris O'Neil. I'm uh at one fifty six Bakerville Road. Um I I prepared a little something just to give you an idea of uh of who I am and where I'm coming from. Uh if you'll if you give me a minute, I'm glad my name wasn't Zajak. I would have been there for a long time. First of all, I want to thank Ann and David for uh for their interest also in serving the town uh on the planning board. Um I'd also like to thank John Souza for his many years of service to the town uh in his varied positions, uh including the board. I I think that any uh, including the board. I I think that any of the current candidates uh, would do well to display the, the same type of fairness that uh, John displayed to me while I was um, presenting before the planning board uh, over the last couple of years on a particular project. Um, just a bit about myself, I grew up in New Bedford, um, attended Bishop's Nang High School and uh, UMass Dartmouth. I left UMass Dartmouth in 1987 to pursue an insurance producer's license and help grow uh, the family business that we have, Tomlinson and O'Neil Insurance in New Bedford. Uh, my wife Christine and I purchased a lot on Bakerville Road from Ken Allen in 97. Uh, we built our home here. Uh, we have two daughters uh, that have gone through the school system in town and we were very happy with the experience that we received here. It's one of the main reasons that we actually moved to Dartmouth. Um, I coached soccer, D-gal basketball, softball, did the whole thing, but uh, when Mr. Mickelson walks through town hall, he's not gonna see my name on any plaques. We uh, we didn't do very well. Um, but we had a lot of fun with the kids. Um, my agency's grown uh, quite a bit uh, since those days. Um, we've gone from three to four employees to about 16. Uh, we currently serve more than 5,000 individuals, families, and businesses throughout uh, New England. Uh, we have a a branch under the the name Kylie Insurance in Holliston, Mass, which is out in the um, Metro West area of uh, of Boston. Um, I've served on various boards over the years, such as the Chamber of Commerce, uh, the Workforce Investment Board. Um, I've served as president um, of the uh, New Bedford, Greater New Bedford Insurance Agents Association. I actually facilitated the merger between uh, that group and the Fall River Agents Association to form what's now the South Coast Agents uh, Association. Uh, I've served on various charities and and campaigns, political and and not throughout uh, throughout the years. Um, I I've been, I I I don't know what the questions are, but I I would assume, um, I've been asked already, uh, why the planning board and why now? Um, and my answer is is simple, uh, it's timing. Uh, my brother and I have sold off our commercial and residential properties in New Bedford uh, probably in the last year or two. Um, no more shoveling, thank God. Um, my kids are off to college and and working and um, I noticed that the town was asking for help on the board. Um, and um, and I offered to serve if uh, if you, if you'll have me. Um, I will say that I've enjoyed some of the benefits uh, just considering the position. After delving into the subdivision control law, various zoning and bylaws, general laws, uh, the old SRDs, the conflict of interest law, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I think I've discovered the cure for insomnia. Uh, they're they're real page turners, but uh, but we got, we got through most of them and we're willing to uh, to keep uh, doing our due diligence and and work if we're, if we're chosen. Um, I wanna get a couple of things on the record. I understand that there may be some concern about my stance on development in the town. Um, since I was involved in a, in a project already. Um, I've been asked by various people, are you 100% pro-development or 100% no-development? And really, the answer for me is is neither. Um, I think really the the way forward is smart development. Um, when it comes to uh, the town, it's more, it it has to be more measured, controlled, slow growth, in my opinion. Um, I do have, however, a couple of concerns, one of them being the tax base in town. Um, if I could wave a magic wand, I would control growth to stay just ahead of the inevitable increases in expenses in the town. I don't wanna uh, you know, put us behind the eight ball, not next year, two years, five years, but 10, 15, 20 years down the road. Um, I'm I'm seeing a little bit of that in my, my commercial residential um, uh, ownership over the years uh, in uh, in another town. Um, let me see, i- i- as a business owner, you have to make payroll, um, and I've had to make payroll for over 30 years. Uh, I understand the need to keep the revenues where they need to be in order to pay those inevitable increases and health insurance, uh, you know, I'm in the insurance business, everything goes up, nothing, seems like nothing really goes down, but, but we try like crazy. Um, I've also been asked about my relationship with some of the people in the development business locally. Um, legitimate question. Um, I've been around for for quite a while in my business and uh, in in town, so um, some of these people in the development area locally are friends of mine. Uh, they're all friends of mine, uh, but some are actually clients. Um, but I can assure you that that being in business for over 30 years, you get to know how to deliver bad news to your friends. And unfortunately, I've I've had to, I've had to do that. Um, but I can assure you that um, the only people that outcarry Waterford are the taxpayers and the residents of Dartmouth. Um, and uh, I make sure that I I get the best result from every vote. Um, I'm gonna lean on some people for their perspective. Um, I'm gonna lean on the board members for a lot of advice on a lot of help because there is a learning curve to this thing. I'm I'm, I know that already after some of the work that I've done in the past. Um, and uh, and I just hope to get the best result for the town. I'll conduct myself the same way that I have and uh, personally in 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 business. And that's through um, honesty, integrity, and um, and transparency. Thank you.
Would you seek reelection, will you seek election in April?
Or yes, I would, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Stanley, uh, yeah, Stanley.
What, you're first, um. Aren't you first, Laurie? Questions?
I just did that question, he answered it.
Okay. Sorry.
Sorry.
All right, um. Chris, um, how would you use your qualifications and experience to bring an impact to the board immediately? Do you feel comfortable with the long learning curve? And I think you've mentioned a few of these things already.
Yeah, I mean, the learning curve is definitely, there's no question about it, you know, um. Boy, I'll tell you, just um, I I've been in front of the planning board a few times, um, I, for my residence and uh, over the years, uh, some work that I've done at the house and, and also um, you know, on on a particular project. And there is a learning curve, there's no question about it. It's uh, it can be a very dangerous thing if you don't put the time and energy into it. Um, you can really subject yourself to to some pain. And as a planning board member, um, you can subject the town to some pain also. Uh, and uh, I wouldn't want that. Um, I mean, a- as far as uh, right away, I I think one of the things that that I would be able to bring to to the seat right away is uh, in my position, there's a, there's conflict resolution constantly uh, in the job that I have. Like I said, um, you have to deliver bad news to people sometimes in my business and uh, it's unfortunate, but it is what it is. You've got claim declinations, you've got increased premium audits that don't go right. Um, and um, i- it's tough, but it is what it is and and you gotta stay true to yourself and just uh, and just get through the hard parts. Um, one of the things that um, that interests me, I was talking with someone a while back and they were talking about um, actually getting, having coffee with uh, a particular developer years ago, uh, when there was something in front of the town that was substantial. And um, they were able to talk this thing out before it even got to the planning board. Um, I thought that was interesting. I thought that was uh, you know, people think that it's all um, you know, just you know, by Robert's rules and and sometimes, sometimes as as a resident, uh, you 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 get very concerned about some things that you hear in front of the boards. And um, it, I I I wouldn't, I I wouldn't think that it would be a bad thing to uh, to kind of reach out to people and uh, really get to know uh, what they're looking to do, um, how it's gonna affect the town and really form an opinion uh, much earlier than uh, than on a Monday night at at seven o'clock. Um, policy language is is a, is a very difficult thing in my business. Uh, there's a lot of uh, there are a lot of definitions in in uh, in the planning arena uh, in any town, but um, in Dartmouth. Um, and uh, it it just takes a lot of work to get through those definitions and um, I I I've gotten, I've gotten a little bit better at uh, the nuances in policy language where they give you coverage and then they take it away. Um, so uh, you you really have to kind of read between the lines sometimes to make sure you understand what the nuance is in some of those things. Um, uh, I I've been in front of uh, the the Conservation Board, um, Building Department, DPW, um, uh, School Department um, over the years and um, I I've seen how they work in uh, the planning board intrigued me, it really does. Um, but uh, I'm rambling now, so. Sorry, Stan, if I didn't answer all your questions.
Thank you.
Sean?
Thank you, Laurie. Hey, Chris.
Hi, Sean.
Um, pretty much, my question was already answered, so I can tell you that right now. And the question was basically, what is your knowledge base of the tone, of the town zoning bylaws, planning regulations, um, and how it's derived from personal and and professional experience? So you've already answered that. So the question, so now it gets to the gist of the other question is, do you think you have, or are you aware of any conflicts that you may have um, in discussing any proposals that may come before the board um, down the line?
You know, the the only, and I've I've thought of this, the only conflicts that that really come up are 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 personal relationships, from what I can see. Um, I don't, I don't, you know, I have business relationships with people in town and um, you know, I I know other planning board members, select board members have the same thing. Um, I've looked at the conflict of interest law to make sure that I understand what those uh, you know, what those alleys look like and make sure that we don't, uh, I don't get myself in trouble, um, and I don't get the town uh, board in trouble in the, in the town itself. Um, so it's a, it's a very, very serious part of uh, of of the undertaking here and I, and I take it very seriously. Um, I, I thi- I think, you know, i- it goes back to the whole point of being honest and transparent. Uh, it sounds corny, but it's true. Um, as long as you're above board and um, you you express to people exactly what your wishes are and how you wanna get from point A to point B, I think a lot of those conflicts can go away. Um, and the only other thing to to do in, from what I can see is to make sure that everybody's aware of it, that um, there are relationships that uh, are brought uh, up at the board meetings, but there are, there are particular relationships that you have to actually submit documentation on. Um, and uh, and I'm aware of those and and would adhere to those to the nth degree.
Well, there's nothing being corny, there's nothing corny about being, doing the right thing, so, thank you, Chris.
Yep.
Okay, the last question is, where do you see Dartmouth in five to 10 years? And what would you change to achieve a balance of residential, commercial, and industrial land use for the long term sustainability of the town? And what do you feel are the most significant challenges facing the planning board right now?
Well, I I, let me see. That's a good one. Um, that that requires a lot of thought. Uh, I I think that um, one great thing that I think we have right now is a good mix. Uh, from what I can see, there there's a good mix between residential, commercial, retail, industrial, um, you know, you've got the uh, um, you've got the uh, the solar farms going, i- it's just, th- there's a great mix in town. I mean, I, you know, the the old industrial cities, uh, you know, th- they get in, they get in trouble because of that mix. Um, and you know, the burden seems to, seems to go too hard on one side in 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 certain areas. I'd like to try and keep that, uh, you know, the tax burden, uh, the valuations as as slow and steady as as possible. Um, I think fluctuations hurt hurt in uh, in in every business and fluctuations are never good. Um, so, you know, i- i- the mix, what would I do long term? I mean, I think it comes back to to really listening to your fellow board members, listening to the select board members to find out exactly what their vision is for the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. I mean, I have kids that I'd love to have move back into town when when they get older. Um, they're not moving back to my house, I'll tell you that much. But if they can, if they can move back to town, if they can afford a good dwelling in town, if they can start a business in town, there you go. What what more can you ask for? Um, there are towns that uh, you know, that y- you can't do that everywhere. You can't, in Nantucket, you have a big problem over there with second, third generation being able to get back into the town where they grew up. Um, that's so unfortunate. Uh, and I think it becomes a problem because of the mix and the restrictions. Um, and you know, y- you can try and limit, I think, the amount of development as much as you can, but let's, let's not kid ourselves, right? Property owners have rights, uh, as long as you can, you know, kind of get them in the middle between uh, the black and white, uh, let them know exactly what the rules are. Everybody plays from the same rules. Uh, if you need to tweak those rules, I have no problem with tweaking rules, as long as it benefits everybody. Uh, and and who's the town to do those things, then uh, then yeah, I I'd listen to, I'd listen to all sides for sure. Um, but uh, but it's, you know, it's gonna be interesting, you know, I think the next five to 10 years, I mean, listen, th- they don't make any more land, so we gotta make sure that we use it properly.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay. Are the two boards ready to deliberate?
Yes.
Hmm, yep, yes.
As I would just tell Chris the same thing you told the other applicants, that you're gonna make a decision tonight, or the boards are gonna convene and then you'll get back to them. The same as you had told all of the other applicants.
Yeah, Chris, we're making, um, yeah, I thought I already did that in the beginning. We'll be making the decision tonight. Um, and uh, whoever gets appointed, our next meeting is October 5th and um, the town planner will get all the information to you. Uh, you, you know, the one thing I did not tell all three applicants is you will have to go into the town hall and get sworn in. Are the other two applicants still on?
Well, Laurie, Laurie, it'd be automatic, whoever gets, whoever gets the, gets the position will be asked to go to the town hall and be sworn in.
Right, I know, but I should have told them that and I didn't.
They'll receive, they'll receive an appointment letter from the town.
Okay, thank you. Um, DCTV, are the, are all three applicants still in the background?
No, they've left.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Uh, have they all, has all three left? Are we, are we ready to go into our deliberations or not quite yet?
Chris is still here, but.
They can be here for deliberations, that doesn't, you know, that's, they can watch it on television tomorrow, so.
Okay, that's fine.
They can stream it or whatever it is these kids do today. Cause I don't, whatever. Okay, conversation.
Done.
Sean?
Um, again, um, we are blessed with uh, a plethora of people applying for a position which makes it difficult to um, to to make. The concern here is not so much ramping up and getting the knowledge, it's just immediately going to work. Um, we all know that the planning board um, is very, very intense in regulations. Um, we have our regulations, but it's not as intense as that uh, as the planning board and and significant, significant things. And one of the things that, you know, I'm concerned with, with um, it's not so much the pho- how a person has a philosophy of what the town should be, but whether or not the person has the philosophy of doing what is right. Um, you know, and that's always been something that I've been um, you know, concerned with and, you know, sometimes doing the right thing isn't necessarily um, the most popular thing uh, with others. Uh, and that's the 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 key that I, that I have. Um, I think two of the candidates, um, in my opinion, would um, be a good asset uh, to the board. Um, I think one, the other candidate, um, for all intents and purposes, I think would would um, would require more uh, intense um, experience. Um, so I I'm, I'm not sure um, how the the other members feel, but I I know I have um, in writing, and as the questions were being written, I was writing down different things, writing down numbers and whatnot and um, I have one candidate just basically one point above um, the other candidate. Um, so I, I I don't wanna, I don't wanna just take this opportunity to to just go into something. I'd I'd rather hear what other people have to, have to say right now.
Um, I find, I, yeah, I find that interesting because what I found was out of the three candidates, there was only one candidate who did research and said that they looked into, you know, the um, the different uh, they looked into the laws and they looked into, you know, um, confidentiality and all of that stuff. I found that interesting, but Stanley?
Um, I I agree with the, both you and Sean. Um, we we we're very fortunate, uh, usually we have to, we have to pull people by their hair to get them in 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 the building to, to 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 give a few hours a week of their time. Um, and I understand how busy everyone is, but, and we're very fortunate to get three very nice people. Uh, but one stands out above the, above the three. Um, um, uh, because of that, um, I I wanna give other people, give their opinions. Um, uh, because of that, um, I I wanna give other people, give their opinions, but one significantly shines. And um, uh, and I I I think we'll do very well with that, uh, planning board will do very well with that person.
Yeah, I I personally like to hear more from what the planning board is thinking, because they know the job better than I do.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, Frank.
So, um, the content of the planning board, the real estate, the background, is is a part of. What's very important to be on the board, but also knowing how boards work, being on all the boards, uh, that's a very important part, too. Um, and if we can grab somebody, one particular person stood out. That has experience uh with other boards, with um other organizations. And that's a very valuable asset, nobody can come on this board knowing all the rules and regulations. Nobody leaves this board knowing all the rules and regulations. Um, so to come in and have experience working together as a team. Is very important to me as a planning board member.
Hmm, God.
I um, I have to agree with uh Kevin. Uh, I think that um. Someone that's done some research already and knows how complicated it is, because it is very complicated, I've been in there a year. And uh still learning quite a bit, and I was on the zoning board for nine years. So it's a complicated uh board, it's uh, it's much harder than the zoning board. Um, so I think that when I have one person that I agree, and I think it's probably the same person that has done a lot of research. Knows what it's up to, and uh I think that that particular person would be the best po- person to have uh on the board.
God, go ahead.
Yeah, as a former uh planning board member, uh, one applicant stood out for me also, probably the same one be- because of. That person's knowledge and willingness and ability to jump right in at a higher speed than the others.
Oh, okay.
Steve?
Dave?
Um, I don't know if the person that I support is the same or different, because none of you have named them, but. I would say that our first applicant was very articulate on this, on. Critical points of how the finances work in this town that I've I have found. That even though some of my predecessors from whom I learned about the finances, because I certainly didn't know ahead of time. Uh, she understood it before she got here, I was very impressed with that. Uh, I also feel that uh. Her education and uh general love for the town and thinking about it for the long distance future, which to me is more important. Than the short term, I've only been on a year like Margaret. I have a lot to learn, I've learned a lot, I've already got my name on certain milars. As the clerk, uh, that s- with some I agreed with, some I didn't agree with, but they're existing rules, so we went with that. But what I really care about is how Dartmouth is in twenty fifty, not today. And uh, so I I may have a different candidate in mind that I really support and believe in. But I think we should think really hard about the diversity, the new perspectives, the number of different committees in different orbits. That maybe some don't know, and I also did a little homework on each of the candidates, and I just wanna add one thing, uh. You all may or may not know that Dr. Bear is. Very sophisticated on, for example, how marijuana affects the teenage brain versus the adult brain. We have marijuana issues in this town that matter, I feel like that would be a new and different and super valuable perspective. And I don't think there would be any major difference amongst any of them in terms of the learning curve. Uh, I know that I'm I'm, I've been in town for, I've owned a house here for twenty something years and and I I've, I'm still learning and I had a lot to learn when I started. Uh, I I don't think that that's a significant difference for anybody, I think the diversity of perspectives and the sophistication and the ability to. Analyze data is really important, so I may have a different view, but I wanna make sure I've expressed it.
What else? David?
Um, certainly, um, there isn't a lot, and a job that requires an extensive amount of uh knowledge and detail, it's amazing what it requires. Uh, the one thing that I was a little disappointed was that it never was mentioned by any of the three candidates about the um. About the ten-year plan going forward to us, I think that probably is one of the most important uh. Issues uh in town now, because it involves the the total package of where the town's going. And I was disappointed it was never mentioned of of the homework of finding out that it was there on the way. I think that I would have been uh overly impressed if it was mentioned and I am disappointed. Uh, so uh, I'll leave it at that for now.
Sean?
Sean.
Again, it's something that you have to pick up through knowledge and and whatnot, and I I, I mean, I I. Do not doubt the veracity of the love of the town by all three candidates, that's for sure, because. The first and foremost, um. Piece of evidence that they love this town is they decided to buy a house here. They decided to live here, and to me, that says a lot. So, um, I I, I I just think, I just think the. While I appreciate what uh S- Steve has has said, uh, I I think we differ on the candidates, so. Um, if the chairs don't mind, I'd like to make a motion.
I don't mind.
Laurie?
Yes.
I make a motion that uh the select board and the planning board, um, well, no. Make a motion to not, I nominate Christopher O'Neill for the vacancy on the planning board.
Second.
Second, yeah.
So the motion was made by Sean and seconded by?
Like Dana John.
Someone?
Can I make a comment before we vote?
Stan's fine.
I need to know who the second is, who seconded it for a minute? Stanley, and the motion was made by Sean and seconded by Stanley to appoint um Chris O'Neill.
So should we formalize the the appointment by uh what the criteria of the position is?
Um, do we have an opportunity for discussion before we vote on the motion?
Always, yes.
So I, in response to what Dave Tadlebaum just said, or David, I'm sorry, I don't know whether you prefer David or Dave. But I I think that uh Dr. Bear had a great deal to say about what amounts to what's really critical in the master plan, which has to do with the. Financial impact of certain kinds of development versus certain other kinds of development. That's potentially the single biggest thing that the master plan is going to be dealing with. One of the elements that's already in the draft of the master plan is that every citizen who has showed up at every meeting that's been held so far. Or every every meet, at every meeting that's been held so far, the collective group of citizens has uh has put their stickers on the thing that Serp had organized. About stopping suburban sprawl. And uh she had a good understanding of the finances of why that's important, and she articulated those to us tonight. And so I think that um, well, I I would, I, well, we'll all vote as we wanna vote, and and we recognize this is an interim appointment until April, each one of them may run and we can. The election will eventually resolve it, but I just really think we ought to think hard about where we're really headed, I couldn't agree with Dave more that the. Ten-year master plan is the single most important thing, I thought she was the only one that brought new information to the table about what that means. We heard from one candidate about the importance of a sidewalk to Dartmouth High, that's good, I'm not against that in any way. But I think that we got a really good articulation of what the ten-year important priorities are from Dr. Bear, and I would support her.
Yeah, I I will say that uh, the one thing that impressed me about Dr. Bear is that she did speak about the. Quandary we have sometimes about certain types of uh development, uh, actually not helping the town. Because it, the infrastructure costs, et cetera, uh, can can actually cost more than than the taxes bring in.
Exactly.
And she was the only one that mentioned anything like that, so uh we all know that to be true. Um, I I wish somebody had clearly come out and had a whole lot more. Uh, experience or interest in the the zoning stuff, I mean, the planning board is clearly very uh law-driven. Uh, and, you know, uh, it would have been nice if somebody had had more than just, I had some experience because I built a house here. Uh, with that, although I do, I do certainly appreciate all of them, for sure. Uh, so no, I I can say that uh, no one really jumped out in my mind, but I did see advantages. Um, I I think with one of them, I think your meetings are probably gonna be a little bit longer, because it's gonna be hard to not get him to not talk. Uh, you know, I think that 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 could be an issue or a consideration, but I also was impressed with his. Uh, uh, all other skills, I will say, uh, with coordination and uh. And committee work and and working with others and that sort of thing, so I think that's a uh, a a important part of it, too. Um, so, so it boils down to be, I have, I have two also, but we also have a motion that's been made, so.
Frank, be- before we vote on the motion, could I make one comment in response to your remarks?
Sure.
Um, I I think you're exactly right, and I think that one of the difficulties that we face is that. Day in and day out, week in and week out, we have people who come before us with plans that they're proposing under existing laws, which we all have to go by. And so we are, in fact, the planning review committee. But in addition, we are the planning board for the next ten years, that's a second job that we have. I've only been on this board for a year, I haven't been here for two decade cycles. But to me, if I just look at the number of hours that we spent doing X and the number of hours that we spent doing Y. We have spent more than eighty-five percent plus or minus of our time. Dealing with existing rules uh and proposals in this very, very short term. And we've spent peanuts of our time compared to what I think we should be doing, thinking about the long term. It's our responsibility to write the long-term plan, and I think one of the great advantages of voting for Dr. Bear tonight is that we might bring that stuff into balance, where we could spend. Fifty-fifty dealing with the things that we have to deal with as they come before us, but a full fifty percent of our time thinking about what Dartmouth ought to look like in thirty years. And so I really urge all of you to think hard about that uh before we cast our final vote.
Okay, any more discussion? David Tadlebaum, do you have anything to add?
Uh, yeah, I I was, uh, I think it's clear that all three candidates don't have a a a deep or even a medium-deep knowledge of the rules and regulations and experience in that. We've all had uh our our experience with either building homes or construction or visiting committees. Um, I think that um, I do think that um, I think that Mr. O'Neill brings a um. Uh, an experience of working with uh lots of people. And that's what this is gonna mean, I I'm very concerned about the learning curve as well, extremely concerned how fast it'll be, because this. Not only we have a lot of things in the fire right now, but this master plan's coming on fast as well. And I I as, I for one, I'm gonna emphasize going forward that I'm, I'm gonna push hard on the master plan, it's important, so I'm gonna lean on the. Planning board and our board to make sure that it becomes an effective tool, to make sure that uh, that people have the right to plan and vote on what we're going the next ten years.
Okay, now, do we wanna vote as individual groups, count, add it together, or do we wanna do one big conglomerate?
Let's do it, um.
I think by separate boards.
Yeah, by by boards.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we'll do the planning board first. The motion on the floor is to appoint Chris O'Neill to the vacancy until the April election. Um, Margaret?
Uh, I agree, I think Chris O'Neill is the best candidate, they were all good, and they all uh personally love Dartmouth, but I think Mr. O'Neill would be the best one to sit on our board.
Kevin?
Yes.
Stephen?
I would say no, but I do appreciate all three of them for applying and respect everything they each brought to the table, but I have a different candidate that I would have voted for, so no.
And Loriann, yes, so that is um three to one on the planning board?
Are you select board? Um, the motion is to uh, motion made was for Mr. O'Neill, uh, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Tadlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Heron?
Yes.
And while I have some similar thoughts as Mr. Taylor does, I will make it unanimous for the select board, I will say yes also.
Okay, so um, the select board was unanimous and the, the uh, planning board was three to, three to one. So Mr. O'Neill is the appointee, and um, Chris, do we, we, do we, Christine, do we have a telephone number on him? Can you unmute? Do we have a telephone number on him?
Yes, we do, we have his telephone and all of his contact information.
Okay, so maybe you can contact him tomorrow and let him know that he's been appointed and that he needs to come into the um. Town hall to get sworn in, and maybe you can um put a packet together for him at that time?
Do you want me also to let the other two applicants know that?
Oh, yes, yes, please, yes. Sean?
Please let them know that we appreciate them uh stepping up.
Yes.
It's been mentioned before, but I think it's at the end of it, it's like, let them know that it was very nice meeting them and having them be interested.
So we send him a joint letter from the both boards, thanking them very much for their um application. And to encourage them to uh to to apply for other board, other boards and other committees?
That was going to be my suggestion that.
I would support that, yeah.
Be sent out to all, you know, first of all, a letter be sent out to Christopher O'Neill, informing him of his appointment. And second, to send letters out to uh Ms. Bear and Mr. Canberra, uh, thanking them for their uh. For their applications and then still encouraging them to uh still um come forward uh when a vacancy occurs. Or to run for office.
Yeah, they could run for office in April.
Right, precisely. There are other, there are other committees out there that need to have, you know, people and.
Yes.
Yes.
They could run, they could run for this one, too.
They can run for anything.
They can run for the seat in um, in April.
So we'll, we'll send out an appointment letter tomorrow and the and of letters, thank you letters to the other uh applicants. Encouraging them to um. Other boards.
Yeah, stay interested, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, um, so the planning board, I need a motion to adjourn our portion of the meeting. I make that. Okay, Margaret made the motion and did Kevin second?
Yes.
The motion has been made to adjourn the planning board meeting, I need a roll call, Kevin?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Loriann, yes, our meeting has adjourned, thank you very much for the selection, it was nice meeting with you again.
Thank you.
See you, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, our next order of business is on the new business, and it's the DPW sidewalk repair report. Which was a very nice report, by the way, I I, I enjoyed it.
Here he is.
Hi, David, welcome.
Yes. Oh, good evening, thanks for having me in. Um, I did forward the report, I'm hoping everyone received it.
Yes, I was, I was just commenting on how how nice a report it was, so yes, I I certainly did.
Great, um, so the report was prepared by our engineering intern, um, Brendan Aruda, did a nice job. Um, I also wanna point out that this report is one of two reports we have in the DPW. Uh, relative to ADA assessment and programming. Um, the the other report is a town-wide sidewalk and approach uh report. It was done in August of two thousand nineteen, and we reviewed over eleven miles of road. So tonight I wanna talk about um. A rather large problem in town, and it has to do with um street trees and the impact the street trees are having on. Uh, sidewalks, and um, you know, what we've noted uh over time is we've um. We're getting, we're continuing to get more and more calls about um damage to the sidewalks from the roots. And we continue to do um what we call maintenance repairs, meaning spot repairs at these locations. Um, but it's very difficult, very difficult keeping up. And um, we also have this ADA compliance that we need to always have um in the back of our mind. Um, when we do maintenance on a sidewalk. Um, there's a point where that maintenance turns from the word maintenance to alteration. And when it turns to alteration, it immediately triggers full compliance with the most recent ADA uh regulations. So, um, that's, that's a big issue, and I and I'll talk a little about that. Again, two keywords here are maintenance, which are small spot repairs that we do, and alteration, which triggers ADA compliance. Um, so the, at the DPW, w- w- we follow a number of standards, but for. Maintaining pedestrian facilities, sidewalks, we follow the Federal Highway Administration guide. In the first part of that guide talks about, you know, what municipalities should do. And, and the first thing we do, which we have done, is inspection and documentation. And that allows us to step back and and figure out where we're gonna go, and how do we move from maintenance into alteration, which is technically reconstruction of the sidewalks. Um, so if you look at the study, and I'll point out a few facts in the study, one, we looked at. Uh, subdivisions that terminated with a cul-de-sac, meaning all the, all the subdivisions we looked at had no through travel. It was, it was local traffic, typically people who. It was, it was local traffic, typically people who live in that subdivision. We looked at a hundred and twenty-nine uh subdivision roads in town. And of those hundred twenty-nine, forty-three had sidewalks, which is roughly thirty-three percent. You know, had sidewalks as part of the requirement for the subdivision. Some of the um other facts that are interesting in the report are um the overall condition of the sidewalks. The report showed forty percent of our sidewalks were in poor condition within these subdivisions. Forty-six in fair, fair condition and fourteen in, in uh good condition. The important thing is table two in the report. In the table two, you see that um tree damage data. And what it shows is of the forty-three streets we looked at, sixty-eight percent of the trees were causing damage to the sidewalk that abutted the tree. And again, it's localized damage typically as the roots uh extend beyond the tree. So the report also talks about the options. What are our options moving forward? And um, we, we chose three options. The first option, and we put values to the minutes you'll see in the report. Um, the first option, reconstruction of sidewalks. Essentially rebuilding any sidewalk that we believe requires full alteration. And we would go in and reconstruct it in full compliance to ADA. We do that without removing the street tree. In, in order to do that, in most cases, because the existing sidewalks are only about a foot inside the right-of-way, meaning one foot away is private property. In most cases, to salvage the tree and relocate the sidewalk, we would have to relocate the sidewalk onto private property. That's a big task, particularly when you're dealing with this many locations. Uh, at any typical, at any location, it would require a land survey to determine exactly where the front property line is. If we had to locate that, that sidewalk onto private property, it would require um a sidewalk easement uh or a land taking or temporary easements during construction. Any easement, as you know, goes to town meeting. Town meeting would have to vote. Any easement needs an appraisal. And DPW's policy is we always solicit two appraisals. So there's no discussion, discussion on the value of the land. And then we'd have to pay for the takings. That's, at that point is when our work starts as, at the engineering uh division and that's when we start to design these sidewalks to full ADA compliance. The point I'm trying to make is it is a large effort to relocate and reconstruct the sidewalks in this town to full ADA compliance. Tremendous task. The second option we looked at is, and people tell us this all the time, when there's a tree damaging their sidewalk or their driveway, they say, can you just cut the tree down, pull off the roots? Well, sixty-eight percent of the trees are impacting sidewalks, so that's really not a viable option. And also as a tree, one, it'd be hard for me to justify making a recommendation to the Board of Public Works to cut down that many trees, even if we, we were to replant, you know, trees in their place. It's also costly to remove trees. And then the final option we looked at is remove the sidewalks. And of course, when you say that, people go, no. But um, we would, and, and by the way, that is the recommended option that the DPW has chosen. And we presented this to the Board of Public Works and they support that option and as well as the planning board, they support that option. But it's, it's not as easy as just, just going in, removing all the sidewalks in these forty-three streets. What we would do in under option three is we would perform what we call Phase Two in the guidance, the Federal Highway Administration Guidance Document, Document. Phase Two is a detailed evaluation where you set the criteria so that you have in writing the difference between a, a maintenance concern and an alteration. Meaning we would set this design criteria and then we would go in, we would do a full evaluation and make a determination for every street whether the sidewalk can be repaired under maintenance or does it trigger full ADA compliance? And if that's the case, then we would most likely be removing that sidewalk. So there's no easy solution. This, again, this is a huge problem. Um, and Sean asked me today, what do you, what, what do you want from this like report? One thing I want is I want to share the re, and let you know there's another report, townwide, but um works and, or the next step deciding, you know, how are we going to, you know, what the criteria will be to decide whether we're going to go in there and spot repair all these um damaged locations? Or whether we're going to say, you know, this is, this requires alteration, ADA compliance, it's cost prohibitive and um for that reason we'll take out the sidewalks. And again, I, I just want to stress again that um only a small portion, about a third of the sidewalk, uh, about a third of the subdivisions that terminated with cul-de-sacs, again, no through traffic, only about a third of them in town have sidewalks currently. So it's a lot to absorb, uh, to take in tonight. But um, again, I hope you had a chance to look at the report and more importantly, drive around and um check out some of the subdivisions and you'll see exactly what um, you know, what the towns face in uh dealing with this problem.
I, I have a question, David.
Sure.
I'm not sure I understand how removing the sidewalk helps ADA compliancy.
How we move it? I'm sorry?
No, it, how, how removing it helps the ADA compliancy required?
So, yeah, so by removing it, there's no sidewalk to be in violation of ADA.
But there's also no access for something that needs a sidewalk, right? I mean.
Yeah, a- again, that's, that's the political decision here. Um, Frank, um you know, thirty-three percent of the sidewalks in these subdivisions, um I, I'm sorry, thirty-three percent of the subdivisions have sidewalks and, and, and the balance don't. Uh, I'm not sure how over the years that decision was made. Um, I know at the DPW, our focus is what we call connecting sidewalks. If you, if you look at all the sidewalks we build, they're on primary roads, but the goal of allowing people to get from their neighborhood uh onto the primary road and then be able to travel, you know, throughout town. Sulcam Road's a good example, Pagnarum, Elm Street. Those are the type of sidewalks we're promoting. In fact, we have a list um uh through the safe um street, we have a safe street list that delineates all the future sidewalks we'd like to build.
Okay. See, the, the reason I ask that question is because uh my wife is handicapped. And I have no objection to you being a man because I think, I still think it's a good plan. But she can't walk on grass because it's lumpy and bumpy. She doesn't have that much feeling in her feet, so she can't, she stumbles. She also can't walk on a sidewalk that's broken and, and torn up by trees. So I'm just trying to wonder, uh, how, how does that help someone like her? If somebody lives in a development like my wife, they wouldn't be able to use the sidewalk either way, right?
Correct. Yeah, currently the sidewalks, uh, many of them are in disrepair. You know, and Frank, I think, just step back a minute, what really triggers an alteration is when we, we look at, you know, we, we get to a tree, we see the damage to the sidewalk. And then um you get to the next tree and there's damage to the sidewalk at that location. But what really triggers the alteration is when that segment between the two trees has damage. Now you're looking at more than maintenance. You're looking at alteration, you're looking at reconstruction. And again, that automatically triggers ADA compliance and ADA compliant sidewalks, the sidewalks you see us building on Milton Street or Rogers Street or today, you know, Cove Road. These are much different than the sidewalks you see in these residential subdivisions that were put down uh with asphalt.
Right.
Um, short life, um, no set cross-slope grade. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a different beast.
It was much easier when I was a kid. We didn't have any sidewalks.
Yeah.
We just walked in the street.
Yeah, well, you know, um
Because.
Yeah. I, I, I suspect Frank that a lot of residents that live in um subdivisions with, that, that do not have through traffic with dead ends, uh cul-de-sacs, um they do walk on the street, you know, because the traffic's local, it's their neighbor. It's, it's a little different than if you're walking on a, you know, Milton Street, for example.
Yeah.
Or Rogers Street. So different.
Yeah, tough problem. Yep. Stanley?
So it's interesting what a conundrum we have here. On one end, uh, months ago, a few weeks ago, uh, we're talking about trying to build sidewalks along Route Six especially. Uh, and there, there was, and now, now we're, we're, we're trying to take up these sidewalks, but and I understand the difference, one is cement and the other are, you know, a blacktop. But the cost, uh, I get phone calls all the time. And I'm sure everyone else on this board have had phone calls from, from property owners that uh that, that show, send, send pictures of their, of trees ruining, that they're, they have nowhere to walk, they have to walk around these trees because of the damage. Um, it's just, I thi- I think it's just monetary, it's a monetary thing right now. If we had the money, it'd be great. We could fix it all, but we don't have the money. Uh, and in a foreseeable future, we probably will not have the money to do these type of repairs, extreme repairs, as these numbers are, are, that we're looking at. Unfortunately, every year we s- we, 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 we let this go by, the numbers will get higher. It'll cost even more to fix. Um, so I don't, um, it's, it's quite a conundrum, uh, which way to do it? Thank you. Yeah.
David, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, David, once again, like, I can listen to your presentations all night long. Thank you for what you do. Um, when you say remove the sidewalk, you're literally going to rip up the asphalt and what goes in its place?
Uh, lumensede, but again, Frank, I want to stress that you know, approval of option B doesn't mean we're going to go and start taking up all the sidewalks.
No, I, I, I just, for clarification.
Allows us to go in there and, and, and take one street at a time and make a determination whether it meets the criteria where we can do maintenance without triggering ADA compliance. Or does the maintenance exceed the threshold and now we're required to be, meet ADA?
I just, just a clarification, when you remove it, if you do remove, what goes in its place?
Lum- lumensede. Yep, we'll let, just lumensede it. Thank you.
That's the way nature had it.
Right, too.
John?
David, a lot, a lot of these streets are um developments. Which of the, which of the streets are the more recent ones? Do you know offhand?
Um, you know, I, I
A lot of these look like they're like twenty years old, if not older.
Yeah, and, and I think what you can do is if you, if you have the table in front of you, when you look at the percentages in that right-hand side, the higher the percentage of, of trees impacting sidewalks, the older the subdivision is. It's one thing they all have in common. The older they get, the, the more damage the roots are doing to the budding sidewalk.
Which kind of leads me to um this, and it has nothing to do with the current board. Um, the planning board basically had required these sidewalks in these subdivisions. Um, did, at the time, when this was going through, I know the DPW has review of all subdivisions coming up. Was there any kind of um tit-for-tat between the DPW and the planning board regarding the future maintenance of these, of these uh sidewalks?
Um, no, no, the uh, again, the, the, the DPW uh would, the, the planning board typically uh establishes the design standard for a subdivision, which includes whether sidewalks are required or not. So um, no, I mean, I, I, I think in, you know, the understanding has always been that if the road is accepted by town meeting, then the DPW would be responsible for maintaining the road and the sidewalks.
Cause I know, cause I, I'm looking at um the list on the table four, which is the entire list of the cul-de-sacs and pretty much a lot of these um areas, people walk the streets and not the sidewalks. First of all, because some of the sidewalks you can't walk. But more so, the, the streets are, are actually better maintained than the sidewalks.
Right.
So I, I, I just, I, I think it's a significant amount of money, no matter what option comes about. Uh, but the lesser of the three evils, um, you know, is the, is just to take up the asphalt. Um, and that way, number one, the initial purpose of the planning board with having tree-lined streets is, continues. Um, two, you get rid of a hazard. Three, um, the homeowner is pretty happy because now they don't have this you know, the ones that have the, the broken-down, decrepit sidewalk is no longer in front of their house and now it's just straight grass all the way to um the street. I mean, it gives them a little extra maintenance to do for cutting the lawns, but heck, it's one or two passes and you're good to go. So I, I, I think the majority of the homeowners would probably prefer that over um sidewalks that are in total disrepair.
And they don't have to shovel it in the winter either.
Exactly.
John?
Uh, David, will this uh study have any impact as to where the town plants street trees in the future?
Yes, so we've been working on um we've been working with the planning board actually on reestablish, redesigning the uh cross-sections for sidewalks and what we've determined i- is that um a forty-foot wide right-of-way cannot accommodate street trees in a sidewalk. So a- at a minimum, they have to be fifty feet. And in, with fifty feet, you can create a grass strip between the, the edge of pavement and the sidewalk that is um acceptable. A couple of good examples are uh um, one of them is Songbird, the main Songbird Drive, which is the main road that provides access to all the um little so- side streets. I- if you look at Songbird and the other one is Miller's Drive, both of those are wide right-of-ways. And i- if you look at that uh table, Sean, um there's very few locations where the street trees have damaged the sidewalk because you have adequate space. So what we're working on now is really pushing that any subdivision moving forward has to at a minimum have fifty feet. And I know the developers like forty feet because it provides more space for them to use for, for their development. But um, you know, to get everything in that we, we need, which are sidewalks and street trees, you need fifty feet at a minimum. So that's, those are the standards that we're putting forth going forward. And they'll be in the uh, the Board of Public Works Construction specification, which by the way, will be approved at the next board meeting in two weeks.
David, did I, did I read somewhere that uh, I thought it was in the report, maybe not, that there are different types of trees that would be less likely to cause this problem and then that would be a suggestion of the future where trees are deemed necessary?
I didn't, I'm not sure if that's in the report, but I do know uh Frank, when we um uh Rogers Street's a good example. And um, you know, most of the projects we're doing now in older areas, we're, we're doing a large project in Bliss Corner currently, um, all the street trees we're planting um have a root system that um supports a tree that only goes up, that's only about twenty-five feet tall. So the roots are, they're not as significant as you see with an oak or some of these large maples.
Yep.
So um.
That's good. So I, so a developer, if they insist on trees, they could agree to do that kind of uh tree planting and give the, give the neighborhood trees, but without uh impeding on the sidewalk?
Definitely go on a Norway maple.
Yeah, so we have about thirty.
Yeah, you don't want maples, that's for sure.
Yeah, we have it. We have about thirty trees that we recommend. We, actually, the list, we worked with Eversource in developing the list. The Eversource Harpers.
Good. Mr. Talabon?
Thank you. Uh, Sean, uh McDonald, you, you, you make a good argument that some owner, homeowners would be happy to have the sidewalks gone, they're dangerous, you got to plow them to nice grass, but I think if, if I bought a house or built a house on a, in a development uh I think that's going to be, a lot of people feel the exact opposite and feel like they bought a house with sidewalk and now it's gone. And I think we're gonna, we'd have a lot of pushback uh as well and be prepared for that. I would think that uh uh, it's, it's a giant issue that goes both ways.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, with endless money, there's a, there's a perfect solution, but without endless money, there is no perfect solution, so so everything's going to be a compromise, you know, that's uh anyone else? Anyone else?
Especially if we, if we change the rules, like, uh, David said about the width of the, the roads, then people would know that, uh, if, if this road you live on now was built now, you wouldn't have it anyway because the rules have changed, so therefore, you know, see you later, the sidewalks are gone. I mean, some kind of logical reasons to why we didn't have to do it, aside from the cash.
Right.
Cost.
But we, excuse me, but we still have this, this problem and it has to be solved, one way or the other.
Yep.
And, uh, there's, there's an awful lot of property involved.
Yep.
Mr. McDonald?
And if, I'm almost positive there's a liability issue with bad sidewalks that the town has, that any sidewalk that the town has said has to be put in and that the town has not maintained, and then there's something happens on the sidewalk, there's a liability issue there. And, you know, not only is, not only are we, if a sidewalk is removed, loomed and seeded, not only are you not bringing that sidewalk, you're taking that sidewalk out of ADA compliance, you're also removing a liability issue for the town. You know, so in essence, that's kind of saving money too.
Should we come to that? I remember you, when, when you did the sidewalks in Paynaram, David, you had a lot of forums, people could voice their opinions about it. And I think maybe we could consider the same thing in regard to what we plan to do, if we, in, in fact, we, we choose this route to let people educate people over time and let them know what we plan and why we did it. And what the alternatives might be if we leave it alone or don't do what we're doing, so they should know it. You'll have a lot of people who don't like it, but at least we're trying to educate them in a, in a series of events that people can learn something.
Well, ma- maybe in areas where this is gonna ha- probably happen, because again, I support option three too, for some of the reasons that have been mentioned. Maybe we could send them a, a letter describing why it's happening and, and what the, what the reasons are. So people.
So, so the next.
One thing you have to remember though, the sidewalks throughout Paynaram, the village, the sidewalks through Bliss Corner, you know, those areas are not even close to compared to the sidewalks to a closed cul-de-sac, such as Wingjammer, Spyglass, Galleon, um, Fairway Drive, you know, that type of thing.
No, I'm not trying to compare the sidewalks. It's more the prepare people, educate them as to why we're doing it, give them a chance to listen to what we're doing and why. Uh, no, no comparison, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah, Mr. Hickox, you were gonna make a comment?
Yes, um, so part of our recommendation would be, you know, to take this to the next step under option three. And again, the next step would be develop the criteria that we would document and we would have, uh, in the event we were ever challenged, um, to the ADA process. But we would develop the criteria to decide whether this is a maintenance or an alteration. And then we would have a better sense as to how many of these, uh, areas meet the alteration. In, in, again, if, if, you know, this subdivision, for example, is, is crystal clear, these sidewalks need to come out, uh, or, or come out and be replaced, whatever, at, at least we would know and, and be able to maybe contact them one at a time and say, here, here's the plan and here's why. And I agree, I think before you, we, we certainly wouldn't want to show up some morning and start taking sidewalks out without having some type of communication with the folks in that neighborhood. I think you'd have to do it one neighborhood at a time or one street at a time even.
Yeah.
But again, the next step for us under option three is to, is to develop the criteria and then do the next, the, e- more detail than we already have on these roads to make that, uh, determination.
Yeah, I wouldn't want somebody to come home from work and say, what the hell happened here while I was gone, you know, that's, uh, somebody, somebody stole my sidewalk. The police have been getting calls about stolen sidewalks, you know? I do have, I do have a related question, uh, it's not exactly the same subject, but it is. At least once a week, I get a call from a resident who lives on Arch Street, who's been, says he's been complaining for two years about the condition of his sidewalk. Uh, inclu- he didn't say whether those trees involved or not, but he said the sidewalk is terrible, you can't even walk on it because it's not safe. He also said there's a water cover, those blue water covers that are there, that's loose. And somebody's either gonna trip over it, or if they really kicked it hard, it would just go flying down the street because it's not, doesn't seem to be attached to anything. That, that, that's included in this category, but it's still, it's still a problem. He's said he's tried calling your area, he's also tried calling the water department to see if he at least get the water covered.
Okay.
Nobody has called him back and I, I, you know, uh, I don't know what to tell him.
Well, I'm surprised no one's called him back, but what, what I can tell you, Frank, is, um, you know, that section of Bliss Corner between Rogers Street and, um, Cove Road.
Yep.
That's the next phase that we'll start to work on. With, in, in, we can, because now we've, we've completed Rogers Street this year, this fall, we'll complete, uh, Cove Road. And that allows us to start doing the repairs of all those streets. We're gonna start at Churden on the top and we're gonna work east down the hill, doing one at a, you know, not one, depending how big the phase is, probably two or three of those streets each year moving forward. So Arch Street is, um, you know, is on the list, I guess is all I can say. Uh, subject to funding, we'll, you know, it's, it's, it's on our radar and we do plan to do that last, uh, section of Bliss Corner in the, in the next, uh, two or three years to complete that, right down to.
Knowing the process you used, I assured him it was on the list, but I couldn't tell him how long it was gonna be before somebody actually got to it, that's, uh.
Yeah, yeah, again, um, it's, we're starting next year, we, it will, will be shared in the year after that, we'll be doing two or three streets, working our way down.
Okay, at least I'll have some, more, something more specific to tell him when he calls me next week.
Yeah, I will, uh, I'll look into the water curb, uh, as well. I'm surprised no one got back to him.
Thank you, I'll tell him that also, I'm sure he'll be happy. Anybody else? David, thank you very much. And again, tell Brendan it was a very nice report, I, I enjoyed it, it's, uh, it was very, uh, interesting. Do you need a vote from us or something, or?
I do, I'd like just, uh, it's, I'm not sure if it's a binding, but I'd, I'd like your support to move forward with option three, so we can start to develop the criteria and, and I can come back or we can go back and report to you exactly, uh, of those, uh, thirty-three percent, you know, of those forty-three streets, how many, um, how many we can continue to maintain and meet ADA and how many, uh, we can't.
Okay.
Motion, uh, to, uh, to move forward with option three.
Okay, thank you, Stan. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, comment?
Yes?
Uh, this is gonna, uh, it's gonna cause a lot of, uh, stir just by what we're voting on tonight. Is there any way we can do, provide some kind of explanation as to what, what's gonna happen next and why, so people can get some answers as opposed to thinking that the, the street, the sidewalk's coming down tomorrow morning?
Well, I think we're a long way from that because of the study.
No, no, I understand that. I'm talking about the perception of what's gonna happen to these sidewalks. If we are now voting to, uh, to look towards option three, which I understand requires, uh, I heard what David described, long process, but I think people have a bit of a right to know what the process is or what happens next.
They can always contact the DPW and request, and you'll find out that information.
Yeah, certainly, uh, I can put together a summary as to what the process is, you know, what we go through in determining whether the road can continue to be maintained or whether it needs to be altered.
If you could put something brief together, so when we're asked, we could say, please refer to the DPW website and you get the answer?
I will do that.
But we currently, we currently do not have a timetable, correct?
We do not, no.
Right.
Right, I understand that.
So we, they need to know that also.
Right.
Yep.
Well.
Whatever, something simple that could be stated, so people can know what's going on in a brief way, that uh, understanding the process, I think would be very helpful. We can do, refer them to, uh, information rather than, uh, rather than just, what do we do now? So.
Yeah, we can do that.
Be happy to vote for it.
We can do that.
Yeah, I al- I also say, I'm glad that he's gonna keep us posted, as you said, David, because, uh, we're gonna get the phone calls first, I'm sure. Sort of something starts to happen or even a rumor of something happening, so.
Yep.
Uh, the more information we have, the better we can answer the questions.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call, vote please, Mr. McDonald.
Uh, come to me last, please.
Okay, uh, Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Heron?
Yes.
And me, yes. Mr. McDonald, you're last.
Okay, I'm going to abstain from this vote. As my job is a property manager for North Darmouth Properties, I manage a, a trust, a realis- a, a realty trust or HOA, uh, which six of these streets are involved with. Even though there is no financial connection to, with this project, with these streets, I still manage it. I don't want anybody to take, um, take anything and say that I'm doing this because of that property, so I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Uh, that's understood, and I appreciate that. So it's for, four to, uh, four zero one, with the Ford favor and more abstention.
And please have the abstention noted.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gracy, we, we wanted to issue, so we wanted the, the board to, I guess, come to a decision on how to handle uh, the sidewalk issue as you have tonight, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that there's a resident in town on Cutter Lane that's had a significant issue with, uh, the tree root because of, uh, the subdivision guidelines with the sidewalk and driveway within the road right-of-way. That's become a significant, uh, hazard. Uh, the safety officer, Viero, has been out there too to evaluate it. He's recommended that, um, you know, be repaired because of the tree root damage to the driveway and sidewalk, and we want to request that the board, um, allow the DPW to go out there and fix this issue so as, uh, not to have a significant hazard any longer. It's been going on, uh, according to the resident since two thousand seventeen, he's voiced many concerns, so we'd like to get it resolved with the board's approval.
Is that Cutter Lane, C U T T E R, or Cottle Lane, C O T T L E?
Lane.
Cutter Lane?
Yes, my Worcester accent sometimes, uh, comes back when it gets late.
Uh, is, is that setting a precedent by doing this particular project and others that may be just as bad or procedures?
Uh, no, because the boards voted to, uh, support option three, which this would be in line with the board's option three. That's why we wanted to wait until the board had made a decision on this option.
No, I mean, could there be ten others in the same condition that they wanted done?
You know, that, that's, the, uh, DPW, as you mentioned, is, is gonna, has a plan in place, uh, will develop a plan it's over time to deal with these issues. This one is significant, it brought it up to the attention of, uh, many people, so we thought it would be worthwhile to resolve.
I know, I understand that, but if someone comes up tomorrow with a. It would not.
Well.
Eventually, they're all gonna get done. I mean, if, if something is significant like this, I think the DPW would go out there and, uh, address it.
Right, that's what I was just gonna say. If something is significant as that, then we would just help move that to the, to the next phase immediately. So.
So, so let me just, I'm familiar with the, uh, condition on Sixth Cutter Lane. And, um, that is one of the more significant root versus sidewalk conditions. Actually, it's root versus sidewalk versus driveway conditions, uh, you'll see. And so we are aware of that, um, what we've done, and I've spoke to the resident, um, what we've done since I had a recent discussion with him, as we've been in and we've canvassed that neighborhood. And, um, trying to think, that's Schooner Drive, uh, going in off of Potter Street. Um, that's a neighborhood that would most likely be a maintenance neighborhood. Because with the exception of Sixth Cutter, most of the other areas are mi- are minor. So, um, that's something, uh, Sean, um, Sean McGinnis, that we do plan to take a look at and see if we can address sooner than later.
Great. Well, I, I, I'm just, um, forgive me for pushing this, but if someone comes in with a complaint that is really, uh, in the same, uh, same category, are we in a position, and I want to make more work for you and make more headaches for you, Dave, but are we in a position to evaluate that and say, yes, it does m- meet that criteria, we gotta take care of this right away? Or is that really not gonna happen?
Um, it's, it's probably not going to happen because we have so many of these locations. Um, again, if it's, if someone claims it's, it's real dangerous, we, we most likely will take a look at it. In that particular case, um.
Okay.
It's, it, the roots are extreme, and again, it's, it's impacting the sidewalk and the driveway.
I understand, okay, that's, that's good. Thank you.
I, I think if he looks at it as something is deemed a hazard, I think it, it would not bode well for our liability if, if he doesn't do something with it, so. I trust David to use his good judgment, so. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Hickox, appreciate it very much. And again, pass on the, uh, to Brendan what a nice report it was, and we appreciate it, so.
I will. All right, thanks for your time.
You're welcome, anytime.
Take care.
Yep. And next item, which will be item B, the new business, provisional sergeant appointment. Chief Lebec, your floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Um, we had recently experienced, uh, the unexpected vacancy of the sergeant who was in charge of our support services division. Uh, that position's responsible for the supervision of nine officers. Unfortunately, we currently do not have an active civil service promotional list. Uh, but I do, and I do not anticipate having one for approximately six months. To temporarily fill this vacancy, I'm requesting the appointment for provisional sergeant, and I'm recommending safety officer Joseph Viera for this position. All of you are familiar with Officer Viera, he's been a police officer in Darmouth for nearly thirty-five years. Since approximately two thousand, he has helped manage Traffic Safety Division. Where his duties have included overseeing up to twelve traffic supervisors, obtaining traffic-related grant funding and managing our police vehicle repair and maintenance budget. In two thousand eighteen, Officer Viera was appointed as the town's EMA director, where he's responsible for the EMA budget and supervision of the eight EMA members. He holds a master's degree in criminal justice administration. Uh, traffic safety is the largest and most complex subdivision of support services, and I believe Officer Viera's knowledge of operations combined with his budgetary and supervisory experience would allow him to immediately assume command of this division until we can arrange a permanent replacement. I respectfully request that the select board provisionally appoint Officer Viera to the rank of police sergeant. Thank you.
Okay, uh, discussion or comments?
Uh, I'd like to appoint, um, safety officer Joe Viera to, to be the provisional promoted to the rank of sergeant until a permanently, uh, until we can permanently fill this position.
Second?
Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call, vote. Uh, Mr. Mc- McDonald?
Yes.
Come on, he's been around longer than those tree roots.
I know, really.
That's the problem.
Mr. Talabon?
Yeah.
Mr. Mickelson?
Um, sure, yes, of course.
Mr. Heron?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So you're both all set.
Hey, Sarge.
Thank you, thank you, boy, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Sergeant Viera.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Careful what you wish for.
True.
Okay.
He'll, he'll do a great job.
Absolutely.
Thank you all.
Items, item C. The bylaw review committee, Mr. McGinnis.
All right, so you thought it was difficult getting the charter review committee together? Now, this is also a year for the bylaw review committee. Um, it's every five years, ending in, uh, zero or five, so this is, uh, one of those years la- it was last done in two thousand fifteen. Um, the, this committee's only composed of five members though. Um, the town clerk, uh, two, uh, members appointed by the moderator and two appointed by the select board. Um, so I've, uh, kind of included in your packet the, um, procedure, uh, for the bylaw review committee. Uh, but tonight I just wanted to get your approval to post, uh, online that there are, uh, two vacancies for the bylaw review committee and um, set a date to, uh, have them do by.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, vote. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Heron?
Yes.
And me, yes.
All right, so we'll advertise the opening for, you know, uh, to be due in about a month, we'll call it, and then, uh, we'll see what we get for applicants, and then we'll have a meeting to appoint the committee. I'll, I'll contact the moderator as well to, to have her, uh, uh, appoint two, uh, members to the review committee as well.
Okey-dokey. All right. Uh, let's see, item D, Fall Town Meeting Warrant Review. Mr. McGinnis?
All right, so, uh, in your packet is a draft of the, uh, Fall Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Um, one item off the bat, I forgot to mention, uh, as part of, uh, as we're doing the meeting remote, um, we need to set up a backup time and location, uh, which I, uh, neglected to, uh, notify the board previously, so do you want to do it the following Tuesday? So, do you want to do it the following Tuesday uh, at the high school? Two Tuesdays, I see Sean's finger, so do you want?
Following Tuesday is election day.
Oh, so I guess we'll not do it then?
It's out. I mean, I see here you have a Saturday, I think the Saturday, November second, at ten PM. Not seven PM, ten AM, I mean, instead of seven PM. Saturday, you do it early, because you're not gonna get too many people coming in on a Saturday night.
The Saturday, November seventh at ten AM?
Yes.
Do we have to have a vote on that?
Uh, well, the, not, you can vote on the entire warrant. So on the fifth, you'll be reviewed. This is a draft of the warrant that we're gonna review tonight. On October fifth of that meeting, you uh, vote on the warrant. So, uh, but in the meantime, uh, it's best not to vote on it, because I'll contact the school just to make sure that uh, they can accommodate us on the seventh. Um, and then.
Hold up a minute, Sean. If we're doing it, if we're gonna have the backup on a Saturday, why can't the Saturday be October thirty-first? It's in that same week, instead of waiting, you know, ten days or so.
It's wha- whatever the board desires. So originally, I just thought that following Tuesday, but you're right, it's election day. So if you want to shoot for the thirty-first at ten AM, we can.
I think, why do you, why do you have to contact the schools if it's a Zoom meeting?
It's just not, it's the backup time and location. So if we have an issue with the remote, we need to set a physical time and location.
I'm sorry.
Physical location and a new time.
Sorry, the W in the crowd, yeah.
I would, I would make a recommendation that we go to the Saturday, October thirty-first at ten, ten AM.
You can all wear a Halloween costume.
Yep. Well, Stanley's already wearing his, so we're all.
Eat your hat out, buddy.
Not everybody can look like Methuselah and get away with it.
Eat your hat out, my friend. It's good, clean living.
So you can see on the uh, the draft warrant, um, there's a few more articles than I presented previously. Um, we started, I, I neglected uh, to mention last time, we were supposed to have a special town meeting uh, in the spring, which we didn't have because of changing dates, uh, because of remote. Uh, the notification for a special town meeting is longer than for a regular town meeting, so we weren't able to meet uh, the notification criteria. So we've added those articles to this warrant, uh, which increased it. And then we had some outstanding bills, and actually, I found out today that there'll be one more article added to this as part of the CPC uh, Russell Mills Landing Conservation Project. There's also a land grant associated with that. Uh, so Attorney Cruz is working on that wording. Uh, we, it was just brought to our attention by DNRT today that, uh, that uh, article needed to be included, so uh, we will include that, and uh, Buddy Baker Smith, he's uh, with us tonight, so he can elaborate on that as well. So uh, he is here in the Zoom meeting, so I don't know if you want to have him go over the two uh, or the three conservation, the CPC articles?
Yeah.
Where is he?
He's logged in.
Now it's a black screen right now. Buddy, you need to turn on your mic. There you go.
There we go. Good evening.
Video. Can't see you, buddy.
Oh, there we go. I got my instruction.
There he is.
Great, thank you. Um, so great, yeah, so uh, Sean had reached out to me to um, um, be available for the meeting this evening. So I, I, I kind of follow your lead in um, what would be helpful in terms of uh, the articles before you have one uh, project. Um, um, proposal, um, that's um, before us, uh, to take the town meeting. Um, we have a, one in the special town meeting, is an adjustment, um. So, kind of however the board would, would like.
So, the, the first uh, article is the uh, F Historic Preservation Reserve, the uh, five thousand dollars. Talk about that a little bit?
Um, yeah, um, so the CPA requires that um, each year we either commit at least ten percent of the projected revenue towards um, a project in each of the three eligible uses. Or if we do not have a project um, to commit funds to, then we set aside in reserve um, ten percent of our projected revenue for whatever purpose um, uh, we don't have a project commitment for. So uh, last, uh, last fiscal year, uh, we did not have a historic preservation project um, to commit funds to, so we set aside um, ten percent for the historic uh, preservation reserve. In, um, and this is something that's happened the last few years, um, when the state um, completes its um, clearing all of its accounts for the previous fiscal year. Uh, the legislature has a discretion to commit additional funds from the budget surplus towards the CPA state match. Um, and um, that um, extra, additional commitment of funds was uh, ultimately made, I think it was, I think it was January of this year. Um, typically, it's in November. Um, so there was um, a decent surplus. And so the um, amount of state match was higher than what we had projected. So this five thousand dollars is an adjustment um, to put the additional money into historic preservation reserve. And that will um, essentially balance us with our obligation um, to put, set aside ten percent. It has to come from this year's revenues because uh, fiscal twenty is closed out, so. Um, Greg Barnes reached out to me, um, we have the funds to do that, that, that will not be a problem, so. That will then leave us square with our uh, ten percent um, set aside for um, for the fiscal twenty um, state match.
Do you want to review the uh, Russell Mills Landing Conservation Project?
Yes, um, this project is um, to acquire um, about twenty-four acres, um, uh, currently owned by the uh, Fentress family. Um, in Russell Mills Village, it is adjacent to, if you um, familiar with the property, it's adjacent to Alderbrook Farm. Um, this is essentially the property kind of behind the farm buildings going back uh, in that direction. Um, the land would be um, acquired by the um, DNRT uh, with a conservation restriction purchased by the Conservation Commission, uh, which then would preserve the land um, in perpetuity as open space. Um, the committee worked with DNRT, um. Uh, well, first, the total cost of the proj, uh, project is estimated to be about six hundred thousand dollars. Um, three hundred thousand has been um, requested in um, from CPA funds, and that's being recommended to town meeting. Uh, another two hundred thousand dollars is to come from a land grant that um, uh, would be pursued. And then the uh, remaining hundred thousand approximately would be private fundraising that DNRT um, would take the lead on. The conservation restriction on the property um, has um, language in it that would preserve the existing agricultural use on the property. Um, similar to um, conservation restriction language that was used in the Dyke Creek Project. Um, the um, restriction would um, uh, allow for that land that's currently being um, used for agriculture to be, continued to be um, in that use. Um, if at any point in the future, the land was not um, actively um, in agricultural use, the, that portion of the property would be mowed at least once a year in order to keep it um, from um, uh, overgrowing um, and um, not being able to be used for uh, agriculture at some point in the future. So essentially, the landscape would be maintained. We talked with um, DNRT and then the Conservation Commission um, about the desire um, to support local agriculture. Um, and so another part of this restriction includes language um, to, a couple of things that, excuse me, a couple of things we had asked for. One was language that um, if at any point in the future um, the land were to be sold with the restriction in place, so the land cannot be developed, um, if this project were to go forward. Um, the agricultural land would be um, um, sold um, with preference for, to support local agricultural um, entities, farmers. Um, and there, of course, one cannot dictate who to sell the property to, but the, the clause basically says if the property were to ever uh, be subdivided for sale um, for agricultural use, um, that the um, there would be local preference um, for um, uh, this, for kind of the, uh, transferring the property. And then the other thing that we asked in, on the Conservation Commission is in the process, um, reaching out is that the ag, the town agricultural commission review the conservation restriction. Um, we would like to see that the um, agricultural commission endorses the restriction and the language that it has around trying to support current and future um, agricultural use um, on that property. Um, the property will um, be um, open to the public. So uh, there will be an access uh, along Woodcock. Um, I believe that's Woodcock, no, Fisher, it's Fisher that comes out that way, is that right? Yeah. Um, where there'll be a parking area and then a, a trail connection from the destruction brook across the street. And then there will be um, public access to um, go into the wooded areas of this property that's acquired, so. Um, similar to other DNRT uh, acquired land, um, there'll be trails and, and that kind of access to it. So let me stop there, if there are any, any questions about that.
Mr. McGinnis?
Is this all twenty-nine acres?
Um, about twenty-four acres, twenty-four.
So they're removing the house from?
Uh, yes, that's right, that's correct.
Is, does everybody familiar with the location of this property?
Just in general?
Yeah. Um, if you don't mind, oh, wait a minute, I'm, I'm disabled, I can't share the screen, sorry. Yep, still, okay, because I have it up on.
Oh, good, good, thank you.
Alright, there we go, um. There it is, right there. Everybody can see it?
Yep.
Here's Alderbrook right here. Is uh, this is the town, where my little hands here. That's the uh, library right there, so it's just up the road, and this is the entire parcel. And I guess this is the home area, so it's this parcel back here that everybody would have. So. So, you know, okay, good.
Great, thank you for having that. Um, the other thing that we had asked for and uh, um, DNRT agreed to is in the um, um, that there would be an easement. Um, there's a, there's a kind of, I guess you might call a, a laneway um, that um, extends from um, from the Fisher Road to um, to the Fentress House to that. Um, so it kind of winds behind and across behind Alderbrook Farm. And so we also had asked that the um, that there be uh, an easement granted across that laneway, so because currently the um, the the manlies at Alderbrook Farm currently farm that um, parcel of land that um, is in this acquisition. Um, and that was agreed to, um, so there will also be an easement that would allow um, crossing of that um, laneway to access the property from uh, from the Alderbrook kind of side.
Buddy, is there, is there a market value to this pro, this land?
Um, yes, there is, and I think I can um, can find that for you.
I can tell you what the assessed value is.
Let's see. So he's just gonna go through this paper a little bit. We have that statement somewhere. Alright, here I have the um, what they do is they provide an assessment of the, what's the value of the conservation restriction. Um, and the conservation restriction um, was assessed at looks to me like the property without the restriction was five hundred and twenty thousand? Okay, I found it, I'm sorry, Dave.
No problem.
Alright, the property, uh, the new estimate of value as is, is six hundred thousand dollars. The value subject to the conservation restriction, so that would be the value of the property after conservation restriction. Would be eighty thousand dollars, um, leaving the value of the conservation restriction itself as five hundred and um, twenty thousand dollars. This is an appraisal done by the Foster uh, company, um, dated June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. So six hundred thousand dollars was the um, total appraisal as is.
Thank you.
Yeah. So um, you know, we're, actually, the committee was very excited to be able to support a project like this. So we know that the, the, this area has a long history of agriculture in uh, the Russell Mills Village. Um, so, uh, we've heard support for the project. Um, there was a, an attempt to uh, acquire this property a year ago.
Right.
Um, and just the financial arrangements and structure of it just um, wasn't viable. Um, and so it looks like, um, and the town council has reviewed this, and we, we asked specifically for town council to take a look uh, at this uh, proposal since we knew that that was a problem uh, a year ago. Um, and this financing structure, um, and the entities involved um, actually um, is something that the town council has had a chance to review and um, has deemed this is kind of a viable way of uh, packaging the financing to accomplish this. Very good.
Any other questions?
Uh, I'll just, I'll just add, so the, the, the land grant article associated with this uh, would be um, because it's going through co, the Conservation Commission, uh, the land grant requires a borrowing authorization uh, by the town. So the grant is a grant, so the town would receive the money, but the town needs to uh, expend the funds to get reimbursed. Uh, the Conservation Commission is not, uh, does not have the authority to borrow, so the town borrows the money. Um, the town would not move forward unless the uh, grant, land grant from the EEA um, was awarded. So this is really just a, a money formality that needs to be uh, voted on at town meeting. And as I mentioned earlier, Attorney Cruz is working on the wording for that, so that will be in the uh, final uh, warrant um, in two weeks. In two weeks.
Sounds good.
Yep, thank you, thanks, buddy.
Thanks, buddy. Thank you all, and, and thank you so much for um approving kind of uh Mr. Souza for the at large. I understand that um that went through. Appreciate it, um, thank you for your support through the years too.
I'd like to just say, if I may, Frank, uh, you know, buddy, you, you've been doing this a long time. And your footprint uh is all over this town, a way that people really appreciate, you do an awesome job, I know you have a group with you as well, but uh amazing work you do for all of us, thank you.
Thank you, great committee, and um, you know, it's, it's rewarding, appreciate it.
Yeah, but we need good leaders, we need good leaders like you, buddy.
I try, just keep me on a straight and narrow.
Yeah, all right.
All right, thank you. Take care, everyone, good evening.
Good evening, take care.
All right, uh, so uh the next article, Article Three is uh Outstanding Bills, it's just a bill from FY twenty. For the, for the Water Enterprise Fund, it was for Corrosion Products and Equipment, it's uh twenty five thousand three eighty five, that was expended in FY twenty. Uh, Article Four, uh, this is the article from the previous special town meeting that we didn't have in the spring. Um, as you may recall, the Water Waste Commission was awarded a grant for the Marina Study at Dias Landing. Uh, requirement of that grant was a twenty uh percent match, the grant was eighty thousand dollars. Which required a sixteen thousand dollar match from the town, the board, the select board reviewed and agreed with the Water Waste Committee that it would come out of their re- uh retained earnings. Um, and this article would allow for the uh that uh transfer from retained earnings um. To uh match the Dias Landing Marina Study Grant. Uh, the next article, Article Five, is the Capital Planning Committee Report. Um, I thought Mr. Barnes was gonna be here tonight, but I can review it, there's not that uh much on it. The first item is a Town Hall Electric Sign. Uh, this sign came to, to be in the past as part of the um. Memorial Stadium Construction Project when talking to the neighbors to get their input. One of their concerns was that uh because of the parking is an issue around the neighborhood, that they weren't always aware of when events were. So uh, we thought a digital sign in front of Town Hall, like you see in many businesses and um up the street at the church, at our library, at our Council on Aging, uh, at our school, similar to that. Would provide us the ability to notify, but also in this time of COVID. Uh, it would be valuable in alerting the public to um what the statuses of town buildings. Uh, just any town issues to get the word out, and also with elections, we wouldn't have to have the sign out front anymore. Uh, the police sign, we could just have the digital sign display when uh voting is, when town meeting is, things like that, so. Um, that's that item. The next item is a pickup truck with plow uh for the facilities team here, um, the vehicle they have now is uh needs to be replaced. In working with uh Tim Lancaster and facilities, this uh would replace the uh existing vehicle and allow for another pickup truck with a plow.
Just, just a comment. Um, when I was on the Finance Committee, we requested a long time ago that if a vehicle was replacement, it should say replacement. Otherwise, we think it's a brand new vehicle, it's addition to. You see all the underneath it for administrative vehicle replacement?
Yes, I'll uh check with Mr. Barnes to make sure that that says replacement if.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could they also put the year of the truck we're replacing and the mileage?
Uh, that will be in the um recommendations that they put together uh that for the packet, so that information will be in there.
Okay.
Uh, the next is a Police Department Administrative Vehicle Replacement, I think this is uh, I, I think it's the chief's vehicle uh replacing that. Uh, Dartmouth High School HVAC upgrades uh in multiple schools. Uh, this was planned prior to COVID, but um they're being upgraded. Uh, DPW is requesting a dump truck uh with plow to uh replace uh an existing truck.
Sean, if you just hold off. And this is where it's gonna go um a little bit for me. The vehicle itself, two-wheel drive or four-wheel drive? I mean, there, I mean, I understand a dump truck generally is a two-wheel drive vehicle, but now you're adding a plow, you're adding the plow capacity to it. There have been times, especially down on the street where my mother lives, where the, where the plow comes down. And they get stuck because they can't get back up the hill on a two-wheel ve- on a two-wheel vehicle. It, it, it's, I know this is something that uh, you know, has been vetted. But it's important that any plow vehicle be a four-wheel drive vehicle. You know, it, it's just, you know, they can put it out of two-wheel drive to save gas. Um, it doesn't have to stay in all-wheel drive, these kind of vehicles, you turn them to, to go into four-wheel. I think that just seems appropriate, I know it's a little extra money, but it's well worth, in the long run. You're better off having the vehicle being able to get out of a problem than having to call another vehicle in or another person in. And staff and whatnot, just to, to tow the vehicle, so that's just, uh, you know.
They're talking the, the, the large dump trucks.
Yes.
I'll, I'll ask uh Dave Hickox to provide information on that. Um, the next item is the Highway Division, a lot of this is uh maintenance, uh, it's a million dollars in road maintenance and improvements, this is uh their annual. Amount that they put towards all streets, uh, then they also have a street sweeper replacement. Uh, this is replacing a street sweeper that is uh very old, I'm trying to remember the number of years. Thirty years old, it's uh, it's real, it's exceeded its useful life. Uh, then you can see the next streets are um improvement projects that they've been working on. Uh, this is Hemlock Pike Yard, and it's a whole area of town that uh they are finalizing, I think this is over by the, the Bliss Corner area. And this would finalize the improvements in that area, that's the, it's the oldest uh section of town that, that needs uh to be improved, so. They would be wrapping that up, uh, and then last is Parks in Recreation. This is a utility truck and outfitting replacement, this is for the Park Director, Tim Lancaster, he's, he's left it bro.
Frozen in time.
Frozen. Ready to take a deep breath.
Talk amongst yourselves.
Okay.
The garbage truck is an eight-wheel drive.
Well, I mean, while he's, while he's trying to connect back, um, I didn't realize the Park Department had a, had a garbage truck. Curious says, I don't think it's the same size as the ones that DPW use, not for that amount of money.
Sean, I remember we bought them a tailgate to help them with their garbage uh projects years ago, but I never knew they had a garbage truck.
Yeah. I'd be curious to see a picture of that.
Yep.
Let's, let's, let's ask uh Tim what it is.
Yeah, I, I think when uh, when Sean gets back and, and we can ask him to um contact the Pox and Rec and let's see what that looks like. And then the other thing, of course, is the Jones Bathhouse Roof Replacement, so that's, that's.
Needed, yeah, it's needed.
So.
I'd also, um, I'd like to see, I know more about that electric sign. So what is it?
I think it would probably be similar to the one that's outside the high school.
Uh, just a one-liner?
Well, this is usually a scroll liner, so.
A single line.
Yeah.
No scrolls, but it's a single line.
I don't think it's gonna be like, you know. Big flashy sign that uh, you know, you can.
No, no.
There he is.
Hey Sean, how's it going?
I don't know what happened, I think our network just crashed here. Get it out of my laptop, I got completely bored, I don't know what happened.
You were spending too much money too fast. Uh, combination of both.
So um, I think I was talking about the utility truck for uh Rec Park and Rec, and this is uh. Tim Lancaster, the Park Director, wanted to leave this open because he's uh not sure, he has a vehicle now that's more of an SUV, but he's thinking he may need something like a small pickup truck. So he's leaving that open to see what best fits the, his needs. Um, and then the next is a garbage truck replacement, they have an aging garbage truck. Uh, this new truck will be larger, it'll allow them to uh collect more trash, but also take it up to Crapo Hill directly. Uh, and dump it, because a lot of what they do is pick up on the weekends when the transfer station's not open, so.
Yeah, we, we, while you were, while you were in uh technical limbo there, we were talking about the garbage truck and we didn't realize that they had a garbage truck. Uh, I know that we, John had mentioned that, that we had gotten him a tailgate to help. But if you can contact Tim Lancaster, just to let us see what the picture would look like, because I'd be kind of curious. Um, you know, because I know it's probably not as large as the DPW's garbage trucks.
It's not, it's, uh, doesn't need a CDL license to be driven, but it's, it's a, it's a, just a packer truck, but it's uh. It's a different configuration than the truck they have now, because the truck they have now doesn't allow them to go up to Crapo uh Hill to dump, they have to dump at the transfer station, this truck would allow them to go directly there. Uh, then the next item is the Jones Park Bathhouse Roof Replacement. That roof is uh come in the last year with a need to repair, it, it looks in better shape than it is, um, on the edges, there's a lot of rot. Uh, so this is for the um.
Sean, excuse me, Sean, we also, can we get a configuration or a picture of that, that sign that it's gonna go on the, in the front of the Town Hall?
I can do that.
Um, you know, how many lines it'll carry or?
Yeah, we have the specifics on it uh that we presented, so, yep.
Yeah, thank you, I think Dave Tattlemann wanted to do that.
We will, definitely. And that is the capital. So I'll get you information on the uh, whether the dump truck four-wheel drive or not, I'll get you specifics on the electric sign and. Uh, we'll add replacement to the uh pickup truck for um town, for the Town Hall. Um, Article Six is the charter.
So, Sean, I just want to make sure, is there still a need to see the garbage truck replacement for Pox? Because that was the.
I'd like to, I'd just like to see the, what the vehicle looks like, that's all.
Oh, sure.
It's a curiosity factor.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Article Six.
He's freezing, he froze.
Yep, again, okay. Want, you want to uh just go through this ourselves, and when he comes back, we can, I mean, it's, I mean, we've done this before, guys.
Yeah, we know what this is.
We should be able to handle this.
Yeah.
You want, you want to take a?
I think I, I think I saw Anthony Savastano was, is he still around?
He's listening.
I thought he wanted to.
Turned into a pumpkin at nine o'clock.
There we go. All right, okay.
I mean, this is, I mean, really, Article Six is just, it's our article to basically take uh the town clerk's position out of the election. And into an appointed position. So I, I, I know we all um reviewed this and, and, you know, and decided to put it on, so I don't think there's an issue there. Um, there he is again.
Maybe this should be a capital item for uh network replacement or something for Town Hall.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, something's going on with the network here in Town Hall, because.
Well, let's all blame it on Comcast, everybody else does, so.
So I apologize.
Sean, we already took care of Article Six.
Okay, should I? Should I, you guys can wrap this up?
Yeah, Sean, I know you had one question for me on this, and the article says that it takes effect on July first. Two thousand and twenty-one, so the question Sean had for me was if, what happens, because we are going to elect a clerk the same time we're voting on this. Because the, first of all, this will be approved by uh town meeting before it goes on the ballot, then it has to go on the ballot in April. And at that April election, we'll be electing a town clerk, not knowing whether this is passing or not. So that town clerk would then be elected until July first, when the appointment would take place, according to this coroner.
Correct. Hey, you have no choice.
Yeah.
Because either the town clerk, when they're elected, will either um. It'll, is, is it the full free term, i- if, just normal? Um, the term coming up in, for twenty twenty-one, is it a full three-year term, or is it a uh completion of an existing term?
It's a full three-year term, so the uh, the previous clerk's term would have expired in twenty twenty.
All right, so either be a three-year term or a short term?
I mean, you, you're not bound by that July first date, I put that in there, so if you want it to be a different date, you can.
But just, just an oddball question, is it possible for us to keep the interim town clerk until we know for sure on the twenty-first?
No, she's only in until, you can only appoint her until the next election.
Right.
Uh, she could run for election and be elected and then become appointed, so, but.
Question. Um, in our commentary to support this uh article, the biggest question is gonna come up about uh the town clerk's unanimity. In an election and should not be uh appointed, because uh I guess the same reason why it failed in uh Town of Fairhaven, where they kept it elected. Uh, I think it's important that we address that issue for town meeting and our commentary that's uh pretty lengthy and descriptive as to why we believe it will not be. It will, it will be uh objective. And we, and, and any other possibility, we, it's far outweighed by the fact that it should be uh an appointed position. I think if we don't do that, we're gonna have questions about it, and it's gonna be a lot of pushback.
Yeah, I, I agree, Fairhaven's problem was that the residents thought they were giving up control.
Right.
Something that they should have control over.
And how can you be uh, uh, how can you be objective when you're uh involved in elections and. Uh, it's a political thing, I think we need to explain that and what, how we think we're gonna, uh, it won't be that way.
I mean, as far as being objective in the elections, they have certain, no matter what town clerk, whether they're appointed or elected. They have certain criteria that they must follow in an election by law. So there's no pushback from any appointing authority on the clerk to say to do anything with a town election. I mean, they have, everything is wrote, pretty much everything in that office has to do by law. And then she has to, and they have to, the clerk has to follow everything by law. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with providing a narrative as to why. Um, and I think that should, that's very important, so I, I mean. Let me ask this question, David, would you be willing to write up something for us to review at the next meeting?
I think so, I think if I'm capable of it, instead of try, I think it's uh.
Well, here's an interesting, here's an interesting thing as well, it shows right that it's a, it's a felony to violate the law. So I can't imagine too many appointed clerks are gonna violate the law just to favor a particular select.
Well, I, I'm not sure that, and I'm not begging off the responsibility, but I'm not sure that I'm capable of, uh, what we're trying to do is convince people that by law, this is an objective uh, uh, position.
Well, the other interesting thing to note is that on the years that she's elected, or he, it could be a he, but in the past, in the years that Lynn was elected, she would not. Participate in counting of the ballots, because she was one of the people on the ballot, that will no longer be an issue.
But that's a good point. Is it unreasonable to ask you to write that, write, Anthony, I mean, I'm happy to do it, but I think I'm not that capable compared to, I'm not being that familiar with the law.
I, I agree, somebody should write, I agree with the proposal, if David's not, not comfortable with it, and Anthony doesn't want to do it, we should find somebody to do it.
Just don't know if it's, 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 it's advocating, I think that might be beyond my role, that's all.
Okay. Oh, Sean, would you do it?
Yeah, we'll draft, well, we'll draft some um rationale, I guess.
Look at it, we'll all look at it.
I'd be happy to help you, Sean, I'd.
No, that's no problem, I mean, the town meeting members will want to know, I mean, there's a variety of reasons to, you know, obviously, the board knows, to make it uh an appointed position. Um, I think it's an easy justification to make.
Well, it, it's also a unanimous position that we have, so that uh, there's a lot of power behind what we have to. That should be in the rationale.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay.
But that's good, because if Anthony writes it'll be full of legalese, nobody will understand it.
Um, and Article Seven here is the uh lease or sale of the Reed Road property. I, I think Anthony can elaborate on this more, but the, the select board had asked to draft up an article to allow for the sale. Uh, or lease of the land uh for recreational purposes after the uh conceptual discussion with uh Mr. Burgo. So this is what the result of that uh board vote was.
Yeah, and preliminarily, uh, the treasurer currently holds the property because it was taken by tax lien judgment and conveyed to the treasurer, so he will need to. Convey it to the town as a whole, acting through the select board prior to the town having any authority to sell, the select board having any authority to sell it.
Sean.
Uh, I was a question for Anthony, I was wondering if we should change that from twenty-five years to thirty years, because banks don't really like to. Well, lend on a twenty-five year cycle, they like thirty better.
Well, one, one of the things that we, in writing this, we were struggling with was how do we, the, how do we ensure? That this is used for the recreational purposes for which the select board wants it to be used for. So we can put restrictions on properties. Uh, for instance, statutorily, we can put a conservation. Uh for instance, statutorily, we can put a conservation restriction on the property, but it cannot be used for indoor recreational space if you would use a con- conservation restriction. So this one was a bit of a struggle. The idea was to try to figure out how do we reserve a str- a restriction to ensure that it was used for the perp- for the particular purpose. The reason why twenty-five years was put in, I the lease, the reason why the lease option was put in is cause one possible thought was we could provide a lease with an option to buy, with the option to buy only be triggered after whatever anticipated structures that were needed would be built. So in other words, you don't have somebody saying, we're gonna buy this property and do X, Y, and Z with it, and then not do X, Y, and Z with it. So you lease it to them, they build on it. Once they've built something that pretty much ensures they are gonna use it for that recreational purpose, then that could trigger the sale. That's the reason why we put in the lease option in the Warren article. Twenty-five years doesn't need to be twenty-five years. Uh that that was just a number that was.
Could we change it twenty-five later on?
Not more than twenty-five.
Twenty-five, no.
I know, but could we change it to thirty if we needed to in the future?
No, it's not, cause it says not more than twenty-five. You'd have to put thirty in now.
So.
But the idea of the lease was to make sure he builds on it, or whoever buys. I I don't wanna say he, because it it can't be targeted to a particular individual.
Anthony, what about the other legal issues, challenges?
Okay, well, um I wanted to talk about the uh the restriction. How do we secure the restriction? And that was what we struggled with in drafting this article, and and Brian and I spent a lot of time talking about this and going back and forth. As I was saying, you can't use a statutory restriction if your intent is for indoor recreational space. So the other way to do it is to reserve a restriction in the deed. So as we're conveying the locusts, we reserve a restriction for whatever recreational purposes the select board wants. You can make it as broad as you want or as particular as you want. The the issue is, it won't run with the land unless we own in a budding or a nearby parcel. And so what that means, if it doesn't run with the land, like if I own property next to Mr. Haron, I or I could sell property to Mr. Haron and reserve a restriction over it, because I live next door, so it benefits my parcel. But I can't sell one to Mr. Tattlemann who lives across town and reserve a restriction that somehow benefits my land if it's across town. Has to, we have to own it in a budding or nearby pos- parcel. Um there are exceptions to this. Um if there's certain legislation or legislative purposes that are uh specifically discussed in statutes such as conservation restrictions, agricultural restrictions, um restriction restrictive covenants relating to subdivision approvals, you don't need to own a budding land. Um so we're trying to come up with a way to do this to avoid the outcome where the town would need, would just sell land with an intent, and then that party, whoever is buys it and sells it to a third party, the restriction disappears. The best way we could do this was either number one, talking about uh this lease with an option to buy, um so that they can't buy until they actually fulfill the purpose by building what they said they intended to build. Or also, another way is to own a nearby parcel. The closest parcel I could find is on Highland Avenue on Lake Nokochoke, and that's far too that's a far uh too far away to be eligible as a benefiting parcel, so thought about subdividing the land. Some of the land is wet, so the first thought is, okay, well, maybe we just give the wetlands portion of it to the Conservation Board, the Conservation Commission. They will own the property, uh the wetlands property, which is useless to anybody who wants to build basketball courts or whatnot. However, they don't have the statutory authority to hold a restriction other than a conservation restriction. So the best option we could come up with would be to subdivide the parcel somehow, retain a portion of the locusts that's actually usable, potentially usable for the town and viable, so that that could be the parcel which is benefiting from whatever restriction you're putting on the remainder of the parcel that you're selling. I know it's a bit confusing, but the I think the goal, the goal is to ensure that we're selling it and it's gonna be used, the if you if the select board and town meeting decides, yes, we should be selling this for recreational purposes, that it can be and will be put to that use uh to make sure it's not just sold and then, oops, what did we do? We didn't really reserve any legal options for us to ensure that it is being built or used for the purposes for which we sold it.
There's also catch twenty-two here also, because uh if a person buys it, uh they need a mortgage, they can't get a mortgage if they leased the land, so they can't, they can't build on the land without having to own it first.
But if they can, if they can, if they have an absolute right to buy it, um once they build, will that give the bank sufficient um impetus to lend the, to lend the money? Will they be comfortable enough saying, okay, well, we'll lend you the money, you build this, and then you have to exercise your right to purchase? Or we can step in and exercise your right to purchase?
Yeah, I I I don't know. I I just know we've had leased land before where people couldn't buy.
Well, we can't, if we lease land, we can't, people can't build on it unless we give them.
Value of the property, Sean?
Oh, I have that in front of me. I had it. Um I can get that information. I don't, just don't have it handy.
Well, it's over, it's over a million dollars, but just to be exact.
But again, again, we've had, we've had leased land that people wanted to build on, and they couldn't because they didn't own the property.
Right, but here they will, we would write in that once they accomplish what they set out to accomplish, which is building a a certain structure, if that's what they're proposing, to put in basketball courts or tennis courts or whatever it may be, that then they have an absolute right to purchase. So in other words, they get the money, they use the money for the purpose of building, and then we can't stop them. They can buy the property. We can't stop them from buying the property once they meet that number one criteria, but the goal, I was just trying to come up with ways to ensure that we we could enforce. Uh these are different options, uh and I'm coming up with a way that we couldn't, we couldn't.
But that throws a potential buyer, potential buyer, a curve ball, because again, if they need the money to 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 put something on the land, they can't do that once if they lease it. They they need to own it first before they can actually put something on the land, if they need to get a mortgage to do that.
Right, but the, these are options we can explore, and I wrote the Warren article broad enough to allow you to sell and or lease. So, so you don't have to lease it, you can sell it. The way the article is written, you can just sell the property. But I threw in that lease option as a, as a, as a backup. If we want to explore, say we get an offer, say it goes out to bid and we get, the highest bid is something the town is satisfied with. And um it was just another option to discuss how do we ensure that the property is used for recreational purposes? You don't have to do that. The Warren article isn't written that you have to lease it. It says to lease and or sell.
I assume as long as they don't have to lease it first, we're good. Mr. McDonald.
Anthony, you said you were looking for another parcel of land that was near. Um you said it was Highland Avenue?
That's the only one I saw when I looked at Map Geo. Does the town own one closer?
Uh well, there's fifty-two acres off of Deerfield Lane, which is just the the North Bridge, I mean, the uh the North Bridge.
Is that owned by the town or the Concom?
No, it's owned by the town. It's just Town of Dartmouth. Fifty-three point oh six acres.
How close is that?
Approximately, I don't know, it's just, it's um, well, this is the corner of State Road and uh Reed Road. This is um Deerfield, Deerfield Road is the last road on the right before you go over the bridge to get to the highway. So I would say a mile.
Heading south, you said?
North, to one ninety-five.
How many properties in between?
Quite a few.
Yeah, quite a few.
Yeah, I would think you'd probably have an an argument. Somebody could make an argument if they were trying to the the idea is to try to prevent a future buyer from making an argument to defeat the the restriction and then just build homes in there or, you know.
That parcel is mostly, mostly wetlands.
Right.
If you subdivide it, how much do you have to subdivide it by?
All you need is to have enough to fit the uh zoning, so I think I put in a letter here, let me. I think I found the, cause part, it's in two different districts. So you can't just keep a ten by ten parcel, for instance, but if you have one that satisfies the minimum zoning um in the business district, which I believe is one acre.
Yeah, it's there's twelve acres in the general business and then there's thirty in the SRB.
Right. You could either reserve two in the SRB or or one in the, in the general business.
Does it have to be upland or wetland?
No, it has, it has to be useful. Has to be a viable parcel, so it has to have frontage. Has to have minimum lot area.
Well, okay, then. Alright.
It has to, has to be potentially useful to the town.
Alright, then I'm looking at a, I'm looking at a uh, I'm looking at a piece, the general business, the general business piece of twelve point acres. There's a piece that goes on Reed Road itself, um and then there's a little tiny sliver pie piece of um SRB that also abuts this property. I think if we just take out that, what do you need, one acre on on general business?
Yes, I believe so.
If you take out that one acre, then this would allow them while they would have access still on Reed Road, um whoever has the parcel or, which we would prefer to have the access on State Road um in and out there, maybe in, maybe an emergency road on Reed Road, but not to um to alleviate, to take all the traffic off of Reed and put it on to State Road where, you know, it's more than capable to handle. But I think maybe that that segment right there was something to look at. I don't know if you can see what it.
I'm pulling it up on Map Geo now.
Well, if you don't, I think I can do it right. I think I can do it right now, so, yeah. Right here. This is, this is the the general business, so it would be this section right here.
Yeah, I don't know how much frontage that is.
Uh I don't know if I can zoom in, so.
That whole parcel's twelve, yeah, the whole parcel's twelve nine point nineteen acres, so.
Right. Right, so you know, this is the um that's a home, so this is the dog. I think this is the dog parcel right, no, 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 this is the house. And this, 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 this is the dog, uh I believe, the dog parcel, where the dog grooming place is. Right here. So it's this pot right here.
Now, I assume based on this, it looks like anybody would use it, would be accessing it from Reed Road, cause it's wetlands. I wonder if there's enough uplands on State Road.
That's that, that's all the determination.
Yeah.
Going back to what Frank said about leasing, I still think we should change it from twenty-five to thirty, just in case there was an issue with the bank.
Alright, there's no magic to the two years, the number twenty-five.
Alright, so let's just so when the final draft comes in to vote, let's just have thirty on there.
Is thirty the right number?
It'll give us flexibility. I mean, that, it's it's an either or, it's not both. You either lease it or sell it. You can't lease and then sell it.
Well, we're gonna, we, the lease poss- the the reason we were wrote in the lease was give them at least with an option to buy, so in other words, they would if one option would be to have the buyer lease it until it does some construction to satisfy the town that it is using it for the purpose for which the town is selling it, and then that would trigger the option to buy.
But the, doesn't the restriction do that also?
Yeah, I I was trying to come up with different ways to do it, right?
Okay, no, I understand.
In addition to this, you you'd have uh in your RFQ uh for the recreational use after this, you could have put a timeline on that, that they'd have to start construction within five years.
Yeah, well, that's the other thing, is I put in the possibility of a reverter clause in the deed requiring that it be to return to the town if it was not used for recreational purposes within a timeframe. I don't think that timeframe would be thirty years. I think that timeframe would have to be a short time, because I don't want the reverter clause, I'm, I'm not comfortable relying solely on the reverter clause. That's a backup that I put in, reasons I really don't wanna discuss in open session, but that's um, I don't want that to be the the sole fallback for the town.
Okay. Sounds good.
Uh question, Anthony, um the town has a uh legal um uh path to follow uh at town meeting for this article. Um could you elaborate on that as to what what this article means and what it represents and what um and what happens uh during town meeting and what will happen afterwards if somebody gets passed? A too broad a question or?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure I understand. I apologize.
Okay, um the, this article is 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 designed to simply say allow the town to do what we say we wanna do, period.
We tell, the select board wants to sell this for recreational purposes. I think that, I think the select board should be uh prepared to talk about what those purposes are. Uh you can, like I said, you can make it just, you can be very broad in your purpose for recreation. You can be very specific, and you're right, as long as you gotta make sure that you don't target this towards one individual, because that's a violation of thirty B.
That's my question, so.
Yeah, it can't be, it can't be so targeted that it's specific on the use.
Okay.
But yeah, I I I work with, when it comes to the, to the uh request for proposals, um I'll work with Sean on on that, um and we can, you know, get to more detail on that.
I just wanna be clear.
You need to, you need to be prepared to explain to the, to the uh, or you, whoever, to explain to town meeting what the purpose is for which you're selling this.
Okay, so, but any, this, and I'm trying to understand the law and what we are obligations are. Any discussion of anything but the lease or sale of this, of this for recreational use is, that's all it is.
Well, if you have specific recreational uses that you you want, if you don't want somebody to be putting in a, a indoor tennis court there, you can say that's not what it's targeted for. Could be targeted for soccer and basketball and baseball fields, um you know, you can talk about needs, needs of the town.
But it, but it still has to be a general use as opposed to specific use or any, any particular, specific use by any specific individual.
You can't, you can't say this is targeted for Burglo basketball, because he wants to have this size building with twelve indoor courts and ba ba ba, because now you're, you're selling it for a particular, to a particular person as opposed to for a particular purpose.
The reason for that is because now, once we say it's okay, then it goes out to um.
You can say youth versus adult recreation. But other entities that wanna bid on it for youth recreation can come in and and put in a proposal.
Okay.
And then the select board will review the proposals.
Wh- once this, once this passes?
Yes.
Okay.
This authorizes the select board. It doesn't require, the select board can always say after town meeting, we're not gonna do this. We don't like any of the proposals that came through, or we don't feel secure that what is being sold to us is actually going to happen. You're not required to do it, but this, you need the authority of the, of the uh town meeting to allow you to do this.
At that point.
There's still safeguards in place beyond town meeting.
Yeah, okay.
To vote, ultimate vote of the select board and, and uh you know, the the process itself, the the procurement process itself.
And once it's approved, then we can go to specifics and let uh Burglo or anybody else come and present us the grand package, but not before that.
Well, you can, eh there's nothing to stop you from coming up with the specifics ahead of time. Town meeting might wanna hear that, I don't know.
There'll be a lot of questions at town meeting who wanna know.
Well, I'm I'm trying to understand, is it, is there a law that's, is there, are we directed by law, or we can say, fine, let Burglo or anybody else come into town meeting, tell us what you wanna do with it.
They can tell us, they can tell us what they wanna do with it, but we're the ones that put out the, the request for proposals. So we have to say, we have to say what we want done with the property ultimately. Or we gotta say, give us proposal, this is our general intent, give us proposals, we'll see which one satisfies our intent.
After town meeting or possibly during town meeting? After town meeting or possibly during town meeting?
After town meeting.
After town meeting.
That's part of the, the, the bid process.
Okay, but that, all that is.
But if you have a specific purpose, if you want soccer fields, you can say, we're gonna limit it to soccer fields or or, or, you know, if you want indoor recreation, in outdoor recreation, you can say, we're gonna, in our bid process, we're gonna require whoever comes in to give us A, B, C, and D and give the town access certain hours of the day. I mean, you could put all the stuff in here.
No, I, I, I prefer to keep it open, but I just, I guess what you're telling me is that town meeting is only there to approve the concept of leasing or selling it and that's it.
Yes, yes.
And we have no flexibility with that.
And what?
In doing anything other than that, town meeting.
Town meeting can amend the Warren article and make it more specific if they want to.
Okay.
They can be four mo, floor motions. I, I didn't see in, any of the pitches, so I don't know exactly what the slight, uh, when, when you guys spoke, I don't know what exactly your intent is for the, for the parcel. It's a little hard for me to talk about.
We have never spoken about the parcel, about specifics. I'm just trying to understand the appropriate law and what, what course we have to follow. And I look forward to presentations by Burg or anybody else about what they're gonna do, but is that inappropriate or illegal at town meeting?
Yes. It's inappropriate because all we're talking about is the possibility to lease or sale or sell the parcels.
Okay.
That's it.
You're not gonna have somebody, you're not gonna have an individual come in and, and I, I can't imagine Melissa will allow this to give a pitch in a uh okay, you know, a, a, over projection or whatever you call it, it's late at night, I'm sorry. My patient. PowerPoint, thank you. PowerPoint is what they're gonna do with the property. That's, that's later on for the select board.
Okay, no, you can't do that. Okay, so. Thank you, I just want to clarify, I didn't mean to press you on it, but now I get it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's a fight light between con, concept and actual.
The actual comes later, simple as that.
Right.
Right.
Specific actual comes later.
But it sounds like we could talk about a concept of what we envisioned there.
Yeah.
The thing is, if you allow one person to come in and talk, then you gotta allow everybody to come in and talk.
Sure, okay.
I, I wouldn't have any problem with that either, that's, you know.
Anything else on Article seven? Uh, so Article eight is the uh general bylaw amendment for uh buildings vacant and seasonal, this is also known as the abandoned property bylaw. Uh, Anthony and Brian drafted this uh with the, the, um, the goal of cleaning up some of these properties that are left abandoned uh and broken down, broken windows. Uh, the Sable Avenue property is kind of what brought this all to light, although we had talked about it prior, this, that, that's reaching the media. Uh, so this provides the um Director of Inspectual Services, the Building Commissioner or Enforcement Officer to uh go onto properties to evaluate them. Uh, it, it requires uh seasonal and vacant buildings to be registered with the town. Uh, and this registration uh provides contact information. It also provides uh, uh, uh them with information on what they need to do to maintain the property. Um, so it, it just with the goal of uh making sure these properties are cleaned up uh and stay in a good, safe condition. Uh, otherwise there'll be a fine which could be up to three hundred dollars per day.
If someone wanted to push back on this concept?
We tried this uh, a couple of years ago and, and there was a pushback and I think the biggest pushback was because there wasn't a distinction between seasonal okay, buildings and, and vacant buildings. So there was, in Ninequid, for instance, is a lot of empty homes in the winter. And that was pointed out and that was part of the biggest pushback. I think Chris Micho's been very active in the drafting of this as well. And the purpose is to avoid derelict buildings and nuisances as well.
Right.
So um so we made a distinction here for seasonal buildings.
Right. Thank you.
Is there a time requirement on seasonal? Because what would stop the person that owns, whoever owns this house from saying it's seasonal property? I just haven't got around to being there yet.
The long season.
Well, the definition is it's either a single family residence that is not primary, not the primary residence of the owner, but which is also not utilized for income or income generating purposes. So in other words, if you have a cottage on the beach, if you're renting it out, it's not a seasonal home. It's not a seasonal.
Right, but what if the guy says, what if the guy says they live in Rhode Island, but eventually I want to be able to spend, you know, uh, X amount of time in Dartmouth, that's why the house, I haven't done anything with the house yet.
Then it's a, it is, if it's a single family residence, it's not the primary residence, it's seasonal. But seasonal are treated differently than vacant buildings.
Right, I understand that. My point is the guy could claim it's seasonal, even though it hasn't been done that way yet.
The question would be, do they live there? Is that they, where are they registered to vote? Where, where are they listed their primary residence?
We don't, we don't even know who owns it. But it could, it could develop to be a situation where the guy says, look, some guy, you know, I'm, I'm out of my luck right now, but I plan on fixing that house and it is going to be seasonal, seasonal. In which case we can't claim it's vacant and therefore we can't do anything with it.
Well, no, there, there, there are maintenance required in it for seasonal buildings as well.
Hmm.
For instance, the va, the owner of the vacant building or a seasonal building, when it is not occupied or in current use by the owner, shall ensure that the landscaping of the property upon which the building is situated is maintained in a well-kept manner. Uh, that's just one of several maintenance requirements. It's section one fifty four dash four, the remains requirements that apply to seasonal buildings as well as vacant buildings.
Yeah, we'll see what happens.
Okay, anything else on Article eight? And Article nine is the uh resident petition, Ila, by law, a resident petition to rezone from single residence to general business that you saw at the last meeting. They were here with the planning board, so.
Okay, right.
And that is the warrant.
All right, sounds good.
So we'll uh make the edits that uh the board requested um and have it finalized for October fifth.
Okey doke. All right, I guess we're done with that. Let's see, what's next? What's left, is it still Monday, by the way?
Yeah.
Almost. All right, Sean, you don't need me anymore, right?
Uh, no, Anthony, thank you, I'll talk to you.
Good night, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Thank you, Anthony.
Item E, Portugal twinning discussion in La Gua.
Uh, yeah, so this came up, uh, we brought this up back in February, uh, prior to the pandemic. So um, uh, Selectman McDonald has suggested that we have a uh twinning agreement with uh La Gua, is that how it's pronounced? Much better than they, um, so this is just picking up on that and there's a draft of the agreement that's in the packet. Uh, we had discussed that, so if, you know, if the board uh chooses to move forward, we'll um, contact La Gua Algov and see if they are interested in uh twinning.
Okay, somehow I thought.
Do we have to vote on it?
Yes.
Yep, good, Sean, make a motion.
I thought we'd already done this, by the way.
No, no, we discussed it, um, but was never, the language of the uh, the agreement, um.
There was no draft.
There was no draft, so I got the draft from um, from the uh, the, the council of La Gua Algov um, and tweaked it a little bit here and there, changed some words, changed some pronunciation, um, some spellings and whatnot. Basically what this does is this just establishes a sister city or a twinning um, uh, between the two communities where um, down the future, um, student exchanges, social exchanges, government exchanges, uh, ideas and um between the two communities to benefit both. Um, this will, this will be uh the second um, second sister city on the uh, the continent, on the European continent. Um, we have three now on um, we have three currently in Portugal, but also, but those are on the Azores. Uh, this will be uh on the Portuguese mainland, which is the southern coast. Um, and uh, it's just uh you know, um, it's just something that, that it'll be a benefit for, um, I think in, in just as we have, I mean, to be honest with you, um, we really haven't done any communications with any of the other sister cities in the last couple of years other than a um, uh, a what they call a convite or, or forum uh done by La Gua in in the Azores uh back in two thousand seventeen. Um, and I think uh Dartmouth, England was looking forward to doing something uh with the Mayflower this year, I think did. I'm not sure that, I think that's been kind of put on, that a kibosh was put on to that because of the pandemic. Um, but I think this is a, you know, it's a good opportunity, there's no cost to the town. Uh, it's just a document between both communities. Um, at some point in time, um, the uh, the mayor or the, the mayor of the, the parish of the four communities that make up La Gua Algov uh would probably come over here for a signing, um, signing of the document. Um, they, they were thinking about it earlier this year, but again, the pandemic killed everything. So I make a motion that uh that we accept the uh, that we accept the, the agreement um and the twinning between the town of Dartmouth and the uh parish of the uh La Gua Algov uh in mainland Portugal.
I gladly second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, roll call, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Talabob.
Yeah.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
And me, yes.
All right, thank you, guys.
Certainly.
That's it, oh my God, that's it. We can go home now.
Yeah, there's old business. I have, I have no new updates under old business.
Good.
About the minutes, let's get to the minutes.
No minutes.
Don't have minutes either. Frank, go home.
No, we've been here hours, Frank, not minutes.
Yeah, well, it says minutes on the agenda, so I assume there's minutes.
All right, texting my wife and that, she's, she's gone to bed and she said she'll see me tomorrow.
Yeah. It might be tomorrow by the time you get home.
Uh, not, not really. Um, gentlemen, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, um, roll call, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Talabob.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Uh, Sean, yes.
Yes.
So, yes, we are adjourned. Mr. McGinnis, could you stick around?